Almighty God, we have the high honor and the serious duty to manage the affairs of our beloved city. Fill us, oh God, with a spirit of unity and understanding which enables us to face our multiple problems with a serene mind with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will always be for the betterment and greater happiness of all our fellow citizens. So help us, God. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with a great and just system.
Let's start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance.
Alderman O'Brien.
Present.
Alderman Sullivan.
Here.
Alderman Clea.
Here.
Alderman Moran.
Here.
Alderman Lopez.
Here.
Alderman Juddy. Alderman Clemmons.
Here.
Alderman Kelly.
Here.
Alderman Como.
Present.
Alderman Dowd.
Present.
Alderman Govea.
Here.
Alderman Karen.
Here.
Alderman Tebow.
Here.
Alderman Timmons.
Here.
Alderman Wilshire.
Here.
Alderman Juddy.
Here.
You're fifteen present, zero absent.
Thank you. Also joining us this evening is Mayor Jim Donchus and Corporation Counsel Steve Bolton. Tonight, we have a presentation of the services and operations of the Parks and Rec Department, and I'm going to recognize the Superintendent Brian Conant.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'm Brian Conant, Superintendent of the Parks and Recreation Department. President Wilshire, Board of Aldermen, thank you for having me in tonight to talk about the Parks and Recreation Department. Parks and Recreation Department is responsible for thirty-eight to twenty-one, thirty-eight parks and twenty-one squares or public spaces, approximately nine hundred acres, a hundred and fifty mowing acres, roughly thirty-four thousand linear feet of trim that we do around fences around the parks, forty-four irrigation systems. Some of the maintenance includes mowing, cultural practices, fertilization, pest control, irrigation, seeding, spring and fall cleanup, graffiti removal, vandalism cleanup, and structural repairs. The Parks and Recreation Department is made up of eighteen full-time employees, and we maintain thirty-eight baseball and softball fields, twenty-three playgrounds, twenty-six tennis and pickleball courts, eighteen rectangular fields or soccer lacrosse fields, fourteen basketball courts, four boat ramps, three pools, one splash pad, two waiting pools, three ice rinks, two skateboard parks, a street hockey court, a bocce court, shuffleball court, and a sledding hill at Roby Park. A lot of our tree work is a big part of what we do, especially around storm events and emergency tree removal. The city does not maintain trees on private property, but we will move trees out of the road or sidewalks so they fall into the public right away, making travel dangerous for pedestrians or motorists. We also maintain the trees, obviously, located in the city parks. When it comes to snow removal, we're responsible for eight city plow routes. They're mainly in the inner city, and fourteen of the schools, we're responsible for snow removal during the winter. Sorry. Holman Stadium, one of my favorite places. It's currently the home of the Nashville Silver Knights that competes in the future's collegiate baseball league. They provide affordable, fun entertainment for the greater Nashville area. This stadium also hosts a local high school sports, Bay Ruth, college baseball teams every year. We also obviously hold our fireworks display there during the Fourth of July, which is very heavily attended. Stello Stadium belongs to the school district, but the Park and Recreation Department is responsible for maintaining the facility. And the schedule is maintained by the recreation side of the department as well. It's designated a student-only stadium that is utilized by both Nashville Public Schools and BG High School. Mine Falls Park, it's a bit of wilderness right in the heart of Nashville boasting over three hundred acres. We have miles of trails, streams, canals, even an old gatehouse and dam. The spring and summer are definitely the busiest times of the year for the use in the park, in addition to walking and hiking trails. We also have boat and kayak launches for our visitors to use. Mine Falls is a great place to snowshoe across country scree in the wintertime. In addition to that, there's a twenty-acre sports complex with six soccer fields and a softball field that's lighted. Too many, sorry. Yeah.
Want to go up or down?
I want to go to the left.
Yeah, but the receivers are under Donald's desk.
Oh, okay. Sorry, I guess.
Desk goes in front.
There you go.
Keeps on skipping. There we go. Parks and Recreation, playgrounds, obviously, it's a big thing we're responsible for. We're constantly going around and looking at the playgrounds, trying to solve issues before they arise, whether that's a broken swing, a broken slide, you name it. Court rehabilitation. Tennis has always been a very popular sport here in Nashville. We offer courts at Greeley Park and Shady Lane and also Sargent Ave. More recently, pickleball has become increasingly popular. We have courts at Greeley Park, new tennis court, or new courts, excuse me, at Shady Lane and Field Groves, which is pictured here in the right. We're always keeping our eyes out for new activities to offer residents. The city has three public pools that are located on Burke Street and Crown Hill, Sargent Ave near Holman Stadium, and Cleveland Street adjacent to the Fairgrounds Elementary School. These pools offer swim lessons each summer and a safe place to keep cool for Nashville families during the summer months. We have staff of over twenty-five lifeguards that work with us to keep these pools open each year. I'd like to highlight some of the projects that we've accomplished in 2023. We had a new playground installed at St. Andrews Park. We had new lights installed at the softball field, Labine, or the Labine softball field, excuse me. We had a new dock at Sandy Pond. Atherton Park has had a full renovation. Playground has been installed that was never there, new basketball court, parking area, and two underutilized baseball fields have been converted to soccer fields. I think that'll be a great addition to our park system. Lyons Field and Field Groves have had new courts this year as well. All right, some of the programs that are made possible through our park system. Nashville's Summer Fund Schedule offers something for everyone, from well-attended events such as Fairy Tale Festival, Opening Day, DPW Day, Wheels and Wings, to the weekly concerts that are held at Greeley Park. There's always something to look forward to. Over twenty-three thousand people attend these free events and concerts each year. Everything you just viewed on the previous slides is incredibly important because without the existence and maintenance of our parks, we would not be able to offer these wonderful programs to our residents. Some of the recreational programs that are here listed, here's a more detailed look at it. Biddy Basketball is the largest program in the state. We also offer Bay Ruth and softball, and in a partnership with several different organizations, we offer soccer and lacrosse and football. In addition to our other recreation activities, Nashville is proud to host a large variety of camps for our residents, everything from skateboard camp to archery to natural camps, and really so much more. They're very reasonably priced, and over two thousand kids will attend our camps each summer. We deny no one admission to any of our city-run camps. And special events, the city of Nashville hosts some fantastic events such as the Fourth of July fireworks pictured here on the left and also Brew Fest on the right. Thousands of residents and visitors attend these events each year. Again, I'd like to say thank you for having me here tonight, and I'd be happy to answer any questions if you do have any.
Alderman Tebow.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a few questions, so I'm sorry about this. You know, parks is one of my favorite things in Nashville, and I'm not the only Alderman. I'm sure there's a few of us here that feel that way. So eighteen full-timers, is that fully staffed, or are you guys needing opens, do you have open spots currently?
So we have a, but we have eighteen full, full-time staff labors. There's also three foremen and myself with a budget of three point five million. Are you asking me if the eighteen labors?
Right now, or like exactly?
Do we have open positions? Yes, we've had some turnover this year with some retirees, and currently, right now, we do have three open positions.
Oh, um, thank you. And even with eighteen, it doesn't seem like enough because there's so many parks and so many different things you guys do. So like I said before, you guys do a great job of maintaining that. It's what makes part of the city so great. It's the events we do and it's the programs you guys offer. How do you prioritize work? So for instance, you know, I only go to a couple of fields for baseball, so I don't see all the fencing. So if there's fence broken, and we talked about it underneath behind home plate there, the fence is curled up and you can get caught on it, right?
Yes.
But I don't know any of the other fence projects around the city because there's so much of it. How do you prioritize? Do you guys have a queue of like, what's an A project, or B or C, and how fast something gets done?
So I think we try and prioritize things about what season we're in, you know, and take a look at it by that. You know, we're constantly going to these different sites that we maintain and trying to, you know, see what's wrong and see what needs to be fixed. And, you know, you prioritize it a lot of the times by how hazardous something is. You know, if it's extremely hazardous, we need to get it fixed immediately, right? Because most of the time in the parks, there's kids there, and that's, that's unacceptable if it's not addressed in, you know, a timely fashion. So that's how we prioritize things.
How is it, I mean, there's so much, so many parks to keep. How bad is vandalism to hurting some of the parks? Like, is it a big part of what's going on out there, or is it very little?
Honestly, it's one of the most aggravating things I find about this job. We are constantly trying to maintain these parks at a high level. I've come in here and I've tried to increase that level. The staff has been more than willing to try and accommodate that and what I'm trying to accomplish. And I constantly find us going and trying to have to repair vandalism in these parks, and it takes away from us maintaining them at a higher level or doing something else to make it better, you know, and, and doing a project that adds something. You know, we're constantly going around and covering up graffiti or fixing something that's been smashed. Yeah, you can tell I find it aggravating.
Paul.
Yes.
So, I mean, you know, all the years coaching, I'd go to parks that are kind of like, you know, say, Jackson Field over by Lincoln Park there. It's down below, right, so kids can go in there, burn down a porta potty or write all kinds of things, or, and you know, you always find, you know, things like needles and bottles, and so it's really hard to find a way to do that. Even more policing still doesn't, can't cover every single hour of the night. So I get that, that's something big. What about?
You know, it affects our cost of business. We just recently went out on a three-year contract for our portable toilets. The cost went up significantly. I attribute it to the burnt porta potties, you know, the vandalism that they have to deal with.
Holman Stadium, I've heard that that may be needing some upgrades soon. What's the status of upgrades on that, when that would be coming to us at some point?
You know, I think Holman Stadium is in need of some funding. There's some structural issues there that need to be repaired before they become unreparable. You know, there's locker rooms in there that I don't think have been repainted in a long time. I think there's lead paint in there. So, yes, I, I've done some work. I've written up a pretty detailed report on what I think we need for funding there. Then hopefully, we can, hopefully, we can accomplish that.
One more?
Yes.
Thank you, sorry. And you can tell I, I love this department, so I'm like, I want you guys to be, have the, the best, I guess, stuff from us or from the city that can make these parks the greatest. So because you're right, if you don't have to fix some of this stuff, you have more money to do things.
Thank you.
Last question, I saw all the offerings you guys have, camps and all the different sports we have in the city. Have you thought about like, is there any new offerings in the future? I mean, I know this is probably not going to be something, but you know, years ago, we had a national hockey team. So are there any new offering, any new sports or anything coming out that would?
You know, I, I think we're always looking at what becomes trendy. And, you know, we're willing to, you know, provide that, you know, whatever, whatever the public wants. Do I know of anything immediately coming down the pipeline? No, I do not. But, you know, we're always, you know, there, ready to listen and, you know, ready to try and serve the general, you know, public in Nashville.
Thank you, thank you for all of this.
Thank you, Alderman.
Alderman Dowd.
Yeah, I want to just reiterate, you guys do a great job, but I know you're short staffed.
Thank you, Alderman.
And you mentioned about clearing the snow at the schools. Can you elaborate a little more on that? Because custodians do the sidewalks, you do the streets, and I know that you coordinate with the school maintenance people a lot more than that.
We do.
So if you could just, for the Alderman and the people at home, explain a little bit more about your coordination with Sean Smith and the school department.
Yes.
And the other question that goes along with that is, I don't think either you or Sean have somebody that's a, I don't know what they call them, plant specialist. We have all kinds of, of, trees and shrubs in, in all your parks and all the schools, but I don't think we have somebody that, that knows how to take care of those properly. I mean, at the new school, we hired morons, and we've learned amazing amount in just a short period of time with their specialists. And, and I think that's something we're missing because replacing trees and shrubs is really expensive. And if you don't take care of them right, you know, it's, it's, it's pay me a little now or pay me a lot later. So could you just coordinate, talk about your coordination with the school department?
So in terms of the school department, Alderman Dowd during the winter, we're in contact usually with Sean and Gary Connors, who's, I believe Sean, let's call him Sean's right-hand man. And, you know, depending on what they're trying to, you know, communication with them, you know, and communication also with the street superintendent John H. Barrell, let's not forget him. You know, depends on the storm, you know, is it going to be a light storm? You know, what are we going to do? We're going to have to come in early and treat the schools with just salt? You know, is it going to be an all-night event? So, you know, these things vary depending on the weather, but to answer your question, you know, it always starts with a conversation between all of us, and, you know, it depends on the storm, how we're going to react, so.
And as to the?
And in terms of the horticulturists, you know, I, I mean, I have a degree in plant and soil insect science. You know, I know a lot about horticulture, landscape design. I don't think you are, your idea isn't bad, but the whole thing too is funding. You know, they could come in here and have great ideas. You know, we should spread this on these trees and, you know, we should use Holly Tone on the plants that like acidic pH and all these various things, but how do you fund these things? So it's great to have the knowledge. At the end of the day, I don't get you wrong, you know, I, I agree with you, but you need to have the funding too to, you know, supply the materials that you need to accomplish what you need to accomplish.
Share one between the two departments.
I mean, just to give you a glimpse, I mean, we, we mow a hundred and fifty acres, okay? I don't, we don't treat a hundred and fifty acres. We treat about eighty. I try and pick out the high-profile parks, the athletic fields, and that's all that gets treated. The rest of it is quote-unquote organic, not treated, so.
Alderman Moran.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Superintendent. You guys do a great job in DPW and Parks. I had a great meeting with Director Foto a couple of weeks ago with the mayor, and one thing that came out of that is not a commitment because the mayor's too wise to make commitments right now, but the understanding that your department needs to expand, and that we want to look at that for the next budget season. Of course, we have to get past Alderman Dowd as well. But I think even filling those three openings wouldn't do it for you with all the areas that you need to cover in the city. More pointed example is the climate change that's happening. You can see it with this past storm, how busy your team was just in, just, summer is still the summer. You only imagine the, the recurring weather crisis will have as the climate change worsens, and your team is on the front lines of that, and having enough staff is extremely important, whether it's shoveling sidewalks, plowing, or helping people out of cars that are stranded. I know we have other first responders here like the fire and police department, but I think you guys are just as equally as important to the city as they are in making sure that people get critical services. So hopefully, that understanding turns into a commitment when the mayor's reelected. But I will definitely say I will be a thorn in the side on this issue next budget season. And if the other guy gets in, I'll be more of some bark wire, so.
Thank you.
But thank you.
Thank you.
Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. Superintendent, I, I really want to thank you for the work that you did at St. Andrews Park. I received a lot of positive feedback from the people. I know myself personally, it's been a seven-year journey to try to get that done, but I understand from whence we came from. When we have conservative type of government here, there's not enough money in them to go around for something as important as the safety or the well-being of a park, and so I would like to change that. I am so glad that you mentioned your infrastructure and funding. It's not only your division, it's two parking garages, other places. We are starting to take a look at that, and wisely we should, because to me, the true waste is not in the tax dollars. The true waste is letting some of this, our infrastructure rot away to the point to replace it would be just too much money. It's terrible. So a penny spent is wise to do when it's appropriate. And then finally, I wish you and your division luck. I understand spinning around in the mid-Atlantic is a hurricane. You'd mentioned you go to, trees down.
They're going to be busy this weekend.
Yeah, so let me make my public service announcement. Tree goes down, watch out for wires. You know, there's no reason for the citizens to light up like a light bulb because I guarantee you will. Call the proper authorities, start off at Fire Rescue, NPD, and get it there, and they'll make the call into your emergency line to get a response out there to open up the road. So again, very compliment to your division. Well done. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman O'Brien, and thank you for your support in the St. Andrews Playground. I appreciate that. That was, we got that through the escrow process last year, and I appreciate your support. Couldn't have done it without you. Thank you.
Alderman Clea.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you, Superintendent. First, I, I want to thank you and I want to thank Director Foto for putting Ashley into her new position at Greeley Park. She is.
She's awesome.
She is, she's a godsend, and she loves what she does. And, and I don't know her personally, I only know her because she works at Greeley and I get to see her more often, and the event that I had here, there, she was just wonderful, very even-tempered, was right on. So I just wanted to thank you for, for that. The other thing is I want to remind everybody that, I think it's tomorrow, that the Atherton Park ribbon cutting, is it twelve-thirty? Is that still going to happen?
We're actually going to postpone because of the weather.
That's what I was going to ask you, if that was going to be postponed and to a, a date determined. Or do we have a new date?
No.
No, no, okay. And the other thing is I'd also like to thank you for your help with the, I'll call it the backside of the Manchester Street side of Greeley Park, helping us with the engineer department of public works as well to make that road so it went down the fire road and not right through the middle of the park, less trees were removed and people, it, it's hard enough to see all those trees gone, but to have seen that many more trees. So I really do want to thank you so much, my constituents in that area do appreciate every extra tree that we get to have there. The other thing, if I may, Madam President, I do want to bring up, you talked about doing the inner city of plowing and so on. French Hill is part of that inner city that you.
Yes, it is.
And you also do the sidewalks, the clearing of the sidewalks?
No, that's the street department.
So the street department does do the sidewalks, so I'd like to thank them. I know it's, it's a rough job because they can't get those sidewalk plows in there, but, but you do do the plowing of the streets.
We do.
It makes it very difficult if people aren't moving their cars with those streets being so narrow.
It is hard in the inner city, yes. There's a lot of cars that don't move, and we're constantly on it on a daily basis. I tell them all the time after lunch, let's go, you know, just circle around, circle around, because, you know, it depends on the weather too. If we're going to get a real cold night and everything is going to freeze, we're really trying to be on top of it to push the snow back if we can. But it's, it's hard, like you say, because people don't move their cars.
And, and I, I just also want to remind everybody, the reason why you do it is because you have the smaller plows.
Yes.
Versus the street department who has the much larger plows. So thank you, and thank you for everything you do, and we will wait to hear about when the new ribbon cutting is. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Clea.
Alderman Lopez.
Just to clarify, I wasn't sure, does the streets department clear the rail trail or is that you guys?
No, the street department clears the rail trail as well.
Okay, because that's the narrow sidewalk plaza was doing that. But you guys do maintain the rail trail. You've been doing a really great job of it. There is a tree over by Chestnut Street that I keep running into, so I've been trying to take little pieces off of my face, but. Generally, we appreciate all the work you've been doing in Mine Falls and the park on the corner of Central Street as well. I would just like to take this opportunity to clarify that, well, in your opinion, that, that park has a big circular area that is commonly confused with, oh, it's going to be a splash pad, but clearly hasn't been, become a splash pad. It's, it's radiated for some reason. Can you speak briefly to the challenges to that?
At Park Social?
Yeah, Park Social, sorry, I was trying to blank on the name.
You know, the, I'm almost positive with splash pads, you need a designated restroom. So I think that's the first thing that comes to mind is how do we, the funding for that, because it's a lot of infrastructure to accomplish that. I don't know if that's the right location for that either. If you're going to put me on the spot and ask me if I think that should be a splash pad, I would say no. So I think it's underutilized space, and I'd rather see it as a basketball court. Think it'd be more utilized, but that's just me.
Yeah, like I said, there's a lot of confusion in the public over what we were trying to do there. Looks like it could definitely benefit from some redesign at some point. I know it came up in your choice, your voice, but Reverend Perkins, Los Amigos Park was the one that basically the community decided what we were going to focus on. But I wanted to clarify for the public because Warford doesn't really have a swimming pool or anything like that, so they look pretty longingly on it on hot days, but as you said, I believe you need a bathroom there, and I'm not sure the footprint was big enough because it also has to be a handicap accessible bathroom, and that space isn't unlimited in size. But I just wanted to comment on it because it comes up pretty often.
You bring up some great points. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alderman Karen.
Yes, thank you. Knew I wasn't going to let this go. But I, I really want to take the time to thank you and also Director Foto, when you took the time to meet with myself and Alderman Tebow when we had some concerns of some of the facilities that didn't seem to be maintained as well as you thought that they should be. So I appreciate that you took the time and that you've taken the time to do this presentation. Back when I was working, we didn't have such a thing. So I think this is great, and I, I have looked at St. Andrews, God bless, that Alderman O'Brien really pushed for that because that was one of the facilities that we were trying to get repaired, and Atherton Ave looks great. I was so pleased when I took a ride over there.
Thank you.
But one of my questions is Greeley Park. I know we did some maintenance, putting in a new playground, but I know the waiting pool hasn't been looked at for a while. Have you been looking at that and as to what we could, what you're looking for in the future?
I've compiled the list at Greeley Park too. Bandshell improvements, replacing the waiting pool, it's a hundred and, I got the quote a year ago, it was a hundred and twenty-five thousand, so don't quote me on that now, it might be a hundred and thirty-five. But I've gotten numbers to replace the fencing, the split rail fencing that goes along the back by the soccer fields that's broken in sections, the fencing around the tennis courts and the horseshoe pits, the softball fields. We've looked at the stone house. We are preparing to put out a bid proposal to upgrade the stone house, which I think is desperately needed as well. But you are right, Alderman Karen, Greeley Park needs some funding.
Okay, I, I think it's very important, and I'll reiterate what Alderman O'Brien said. If we let our infrastructure go, it takes a lot more money to repair it than to keep up with
Completely agree.
The facilities that you have, and I know we have a lot of them. And I will say this, that we probably have had the same eighteen people working for Park Rec for a long time. So we have never really expanded, even though we've expanded our facilities. Stello Stadium, Roby Park, all of those facilities. Stella Stadium, Roby Park, all of those facilities add work to the staff. So-
Yeah, they do.
I have nothing but good things.
Thank you.
I have, Parks and Rec is my heart and soul, so I'll always be there to champion for whatever you need, even though I won't be sitting in this chamber next year. But I'll be there if you need it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alderman Como?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to reiterate a lot of the positive comments that most of my colleagues have said tonight. I think you guys do a great job. I also want to thank you for coming here and giving us this presentation tonight. I think it's easy for, especially people in the general public that don't get all the details, to think that you have a very small scope. Most people don't think about 90% of the rest of the stuff that you guys do throughout the day. And I think you do an amazing job, and I just wanted to thank you for that. And I also will reiterate the comments about infrastructure. We saw earlier this year how expensive it can be to do a system-wide replacement at a facility. I have a personal bias towards Labean Field myself, and that system has been amazing all year long. You guys did a great job there. It has, as someone who played on it all summer long, I can tell you that, no pun intended, it's night and day.
Big difference.
The way it was for, you know, the past decade that I've been playing there, as opposed to the way it was this year, blew me away beyond what I expected we were gonna get when we first started talking about it as a possibility. It's an absolutely amazing park, and I'm happy that it's gonna be an asset for you guys for a really, really long time. It's gonna be probably one of the most sought-after facilities, rec support facilities in the city. So thank you for all you do, and thank you for coming here tonight and giving us this presentation.
Thank you for your support.
Alderman Tebow?
Thank you, Madam President. Yeah, I mean, I wish you could list out like all of the stuff that you have to fix in the city and how much it costs, and we could put that out to our constituents so they could actually see like, whoa, it would cost a lot of money. Because, you know, we hear a thing here and a thing there, but the amount of stuff you guys have to fix or have to keep maintained is incredible. By the way, I got my second rake. Not that I can rake for a few months, but I got a second rake at North Common, so thank you for that, I appreciate it. My question is, so the last couple of years, so last year we fixed Labean, thanks to Alderman Como, and this year he's also put in something for the tennis courts that were most likely, I hope-
Oh, that would be great at Sergeant Ave? That would be fantastic.
So my question on that is, the last two years, lights have come in at the end of, is there a way we can have a skip, maybe get it into a budget where we do one every year that needs it and have some kind of schedule? So that way, instead of trying to figure out where, how we're gonna pay for it, whether it's escrow, whether it's a trust fund, we can get it in the budget or-
It's a great idea.
Because that'd be great, and start to change all the parks to LED. I don't know how many we have that have lights that need LED fixes, or?
Just, I would start with the lights at Mine Falls. I've given Alderman Como a list, but the lights at Mine Falls, the football lights on Artillery Lane come to mind-
Is it too much to put it in the budget, and that's why we're trying to figure out a way to get it outside of it?
I think it is. I mean, the lights at Labean cost $275,000, Alderman. So, I don't know, it's a big, depending on where, you know, what we're gonna do to replace the lights at Holman Stadium is $825,000. So I think it depends on, you know, what we're talking about, the location, so. But yes, I would, I would love that funding, so it's needed.
Thanks, appreciate that.
All set? Thank you, Superintendent.
Thank you very much for having me today.
Appreciate it. Learning about what you do every day. Keep it up.
Thank you.
You're doing a great job.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Alderman O'Brien?
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to make a motion to adjourn.
Motion is to adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We adjourned at 7:34, and we will go right into our regular meeting. Is this in? I call the regular meeting of the Board of Aldermen to order on Wednesday, September 13th, 2023, at 7:36 PM in the Aldemantic Chamber. Prayer will be offered by City Clerk Dan Healy, and all the women and Ms. Shawna Kelly will lead us in the pledge to the flag.
Almighty God, we have the high honor and the serious duty to manage the affairs of our beloved city. Fill us, O God, with a spirit of unity and understanding which enables us to face our multiple problems with a serene mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will always be for the betterment and greater happiness of all our fellow citizens. So help us, God, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance.
Alderman O'Brien?
Present.
Alderman Sullivan?
Here.
Alderman Cle?
Here.
Alderman Moran?
Here.
Alderman Lopez?
Here.
Alderman Jettie?
Here.
Alderman Clemmons?
Here.
Alderman Kelly?
Here.
Alderman Como?
Present.
Alderman Dowd?
Present.
Alderman Gueye?
Here.
Alderman Karen?
Here.
Alderman Tebow?
Here.
Alderman Timmons?
Here.
Alderman Wilshire?
Here.
Fifteen present, zero absent.
Thank you. Also joining us this evening is Mayor Jim Donchis and Corporation Council Steve Bolton. Mayor, did you wish to address the board this evening?
Yes, Madam President. A few things. First, I wanted to thank everyone who voted yesterday for doing so. Turnout was a little light, but it started out slowly because of the, I think because of the weather and the bad storm that we'd had over the, not the evening, into the early morning. But still, we had over 6,000 people. I know that we'll have more in November. But again, thank you to all who voted. But while we're on the issue of the overnight weather, I wanted to thank our city employees, Public Works, the Fire Department, Police Department, Emergency Management, everyone who worked through the night of Monday night to Tuesday because of the incredible rain, incredibly heavy, and the flooding that took place, roads closed, basements flooded. That was a tough night, but they worked all night and were able to manage that problem in a way that no one was hurt or injured. So thank you all for doing that. Madam President, I wanted to mention on tonight's agenda, R23152. This, assuming you pass this, will dedicate $8 million of surplus to the tax rate. With this, based upon the projection of our CFO and the Finance Department, will result, if you follow their recommendations, will result in a tax rate increase of less than 2%, which I believe is very favorable in the current environment of, you know, four, four or four and a half percent inflation. So that would be less than the inflation rate, or less than half of the inflation rate, and you will receive more details on that in the weeks ahead. And obviously, there'll be explanation provided to the Budget Committee. Madam President, I wanted to mention the item R23151, which is the approval of the firefighter's contract. This is a four-year contract that delivers wage increases of a fair number to our brave firefighters. It also includes a unique feature which will help us attract firefighters, we believe, from outside the city, other departments, and that's called a MRF. It's a, it's a way in which the firefighters are, the city helps firefighters over a period of a career accumulate funds so that they can pay for post-retirement medical expenses, which will, you know, make our department much more attractive than others that do not have this feature. I understand that we're really the, one of the first, maybe the first or one of the first in New England, and that was worked out thanks, thanks to the firefighters, Chief Buxton, Tim Cummings, everybody who was able to work on that set of negotiations. So I know you all support this, and I would, of course, advocate that you pass it this evening. Madam President, I wanted to mention on the agenda, R22140, which is the acceptance of a $3 million grant to upgrade, to improve, really a new park in the Library Plaza area. There are some design, there's an entire design for that. There are a few modifications being considered, but this is a huge help and was enabled by our congressional delegation. Annie Custer, Senator Shaheen particularly worked hard on this, so thank them. Madam President, I also wanted to mention that Main Street is being paved right now. It's begun, if the rain lets up enough to allow them to pave it, we'll see. But I believe it will be completed by the end of October, or by the end of October, early, early, by the end of October. And one thing that we believe is going to occur, and this is something that Alderwoman Cle has worked very hard on, and that is CSX, the new owner of the railroad tracks in the last couple of years, has agreed to come in and finally fix the railroad crossing on Main Street. Now, they say that they are gonna provide a Cadillac-level crossing. So this should occur, I think Alderwoman Cle has the dates, but she can give them to you, but 24th and 25th is a Sunday and Monday. It will require a complete closing of Main Street for a period of time, but that will be an inconvenience, but the long-term benefit to be derived for the tens of thousands of people who have gone over that crossing, bump, 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 you know, year after year, decade after decade, that should be corrected. We're keeping our fingers crossed. And finally, I know, Madam President, you're gonna have a presentation from the Police Department and Public Health regarding the co-responder program. This is a great program, a collaboration between our two departments, which, and you'll hear the details, but enables social workers or other professionals within public health to respond with the PD in appropriate circumstances to help take the temperature down on various encounters or when most appropriate, as they determine. So it'll be interesting to hear, but this arose as a result of a discussion and collaboration that began at a crime watch meeting at Caribbean Breeze. I think, I think Alderman Lopez was there as well. And, you know, the departments have been working together for a month, for a few months on this, and I'm very optimistic that this program will ultimately help the citizens and the Police Department as well. And Madam President, that is all, all that I have.
Thank you. A response to your remarks, Madam Mayor. Alderman Cle?
Thank you, Madam President. I did want to speak to the CSX, and it is the 24th and 25th. And I'd like to thank Director Photo and Engineer Dan Hudson for arranging that time. They're going to try to do it that Sunday and Monday, the 24th and 25th, as you said, of September, yes. With the hope that they could possibly just get it done on the 24th. It's to minimize the amount of the transportation, the busing and all that, that type of thing, trying to minimize any kind of disruption. The schools, the school buses having to go through. So, you know, if weather permits, they will try to just only have to close it fully on the 24th. But we know what the weather's been like lately, so it's a good chance it'll be 24th, 25th. They do have to close the entire street because they're putting in full-length railroad ties, where now if you drive over it, you can see where they're kind of pieced together. That won't be the case. And as, they refer to it as the Cadillac, they're dating themselves because Cadillac ain't what it used to be. But it, the, you know, we're hoping that it's going to be as good as they say it is, and it's been decades, decades. And just want to say one more thing, I appreciate the mayor giving me credit. I did a lot of whining to get people to the table, but it's the mayor and our city staff that really made this happen. They worked out the coordination of it and everything. I, I just did a lot of whining to our federal delegation, so thank you.
Alderman Lopez?
So regarding the paving, definitely not the best experience in the world for people downtown, hearing all of the things backing up constantly and all that. But they understand the need for the most part and are very grateful for it. The communication of how to get places has been a little bit challenging for some areas. So I've been working with local businesses trying to figure out, like, okay, if you're being impacted by the Main Street, can we just create publicity for how to get around it? So I definitely encourage all of the businesses operating downtown to start considering over the next week or so whether they want to put out messaging, like, we have a parking lot behind our business instead of going on Main Street. Maybe that will help. The city has been very good in general about making sure that, for example, like Joann's, Main Street Euro, in the past, we've had difficulty with those parking lots right next to City Hall being used for things like performing arts. So they've been making sure they're clear so people can use the backside. So I would just encourage the public, if you're planning to use a Main Street business, just because there's paving and all that going on doesn't mean you can't get to it. It just means you have to look at the map and kind of figure out how to get to it, and maybe use some of those lesser-used side streets. And the businesses on Main Street definitely appreciate it. We also, in an awkward timing thing, we've also had some shifting around of some of our public services. The soup kitchen's in the middle of redoing its floors, so some of the services are being taken on by the Day Cafe. There's a lot of collaboration, a lot of moving pieces, and this just speaks to how well this is being coordinated, because it's happening very quickly. You can see the paving is already like almost up to Pearl Street. And the fact that we're getting the railroad company to actually collaborate and coordinate with this is definitely a testament to leadership and those conversations and that communication that's happening. So I just want to definitely give credit to that. And then I also wanted to respond to the comments the mayor made about the Community Watch. To the public, Community Watches do make a difference. Definitely come and attend those, because when we talk about things like we're struggling with issues that don't exactly fall within the police priority, but the, or not priority, but police role, but they do also need to have the support of the community in order to address those, we can make positive results. So we'll see more of that on the presentation. I'm not gonna say anybody's slander, but I just wanted to thank the mayor for commenting on that, for Caribbean Breeze for hosting that particular meeting, and members of the public who've been supporting those Community Watch efforts. Thanks.
Anyone else? Seeing none? Recognition period.
Celebrating the 20th year of the Nashua Goes Back to School program.
Mayor Donchis?
All right, Madam President. So I know the city and the board want to recognize Nashua Goes Back to School for 20 years of great service to our families that particularly need it. This year, 1,500 families, and that's typical, were provided school supplies, and the students got to meet their, meet their teachers and principals at each of the elementary, middle, and high schools. So we wanted to, and this is something that I know all of you have been asking for, we wanted to recognize those who have really been involved in this for these last 20 years. And of course, you all know this is Marianne Malesi-Golia, who was one of the founders, June, Karen as well. And then we have the Cadiz family, they could not ma- June Karen as well, and then we have the Katus family, they could not make it, but George and Mark Katus, now Mark, both of them have helped to fund this thing every year. Other funds are raised, I think, but they basically underwrite the whole thing. So we wanted to recognize everyone involved here for this great program. So there is an official city proclamation, which reads, "For 20 years, the community has rallied together to present Nashua Goes Back to School, an event geared towards getting our local students ready and excited for their upcoming new school year. With the help and donations of many Nashua organizations, this program has helped our city's children start the school year with enthusiasm and basic school supplies. Senior citizens, as part of the retired senior volunteer program, volunteers from the Nashua Lions Club, and middle and high school students work together to pack the 1,500 bags provided by Southern New Hampshire Health. And whereas the program grew out of a district effort in 2003 to address the dropout rate within the city of Nashua, a student feeling connected to an adult or involved in an organization or club is as important today for school success as it was then. The Nashua Goes Back to School Committee was initially supported by a collaboration between Mayor Bernie Streeter and the city of Nashua, Greater Nashua Chamber of Commerce Executive Director Chris Hodgson, and member George Katus, and the Nashua Telegraph. For these 20 years, the contributions of Mary Ann Molezy Golia cannot be overstated, first, and we have another one that reads, June Karen, cannot be overstated. First, as a BOE member and then an ongoing supporter, School Superintendent Giuliano asked all school principals, and he was the superintendent then, to attend, and the participation of principals, guidance counselors, coaches, and PTO members continues today. And whereas now the committee is supported by a collaboration between the city of Nashua, United Way, who's represented here today by Mike Alberberg, and the Telegraph, the committee is comprised of volunteers and representatives from Nashua's Department of Health, our public library, Park Rec, the school district, and United Way. Even during COVID, the committee provided an opportunity for students and parents to greet their principals in a walk-or-drive-through experience at three city locations. The committee continues to provide a festive opportunity for students and their parents to meet their principals and representatives of more, meet their principals and teachers, representatives of more than 35 community programs attend, and provide information about the programs they have available. Now therefore, I, Jim Donches, mayor of the city of Nashua, and the Board of Aldermen, do hereby recognize 20 years of the Nashua Goes Back to School program in Nashua, and thank everyone involved in continuing this worthwhile endeavor for students. And I don't know if Mary Ann or Alderwoman Karen have anything you'd like to add, but if you would.
Well, thank you first to Alderman Karen, my partner in crime even before she retired, thank you. And just thank you to the city. As you heard, this program has spanned across multiple years and a number of mayors and a number of aldermen sitting around this circle, and it seemed appropriate, I walked in as we were talking about everything Park Rec does, because they have been instrumental, and especially during COVID, to make this happen. So again, thank you to the Health Department, the Library, DPW, and the School Department, as well as the mayor's office, to do my last-minute printing, thank you so much.
You've got your own mic.
Thank you. Well, thank you very much, and I have to say, without Mary Ann's forththoughts and hard work on this, I don't think we would have lasted 20 years, but one of the things, I think, that was very important for this to come together was to get the senior population to come out and participate and do the bags and get their take on what they were doing for the community and the young people within the city. When you see older people come to the event and smile and get to talk to these students that are picking up the bags that they spent a whole day packing, it's a wonderful thing to see, and that's what you call a great community, because you have young and old working together for the greater good of this community. And thank you, Mary Ann, I have enjoyed my 20 years, even though most of it was after I retired, but that's okay too. Thank you, and thank you, mayor, I appreciate this, thank you.
Thank you. That's, math-wise, tens of thousands of backpacks, that's incredible, so thank you all for what you do. Okay, tonight we are also going to hear from the Public Health Department on the Behavioral Health Pilot Program, so I'm going to recognize Bobby Bagley.
Good evening, Bobby Bagley, Director for City of Nashua Division of Public Health and Community Services. I want to thank you for the opportunity this evening for us to do a presentation on the Nashua Police Department and the Division of Public Health and Community Services Behavioral Health Program. I am going to introduce the presenters for this evening, which are Leah Elliott, our licensed clinical social worker, and Lisa Vasquez, who else is our Behavioral Health Strategist with our Nashua Police Department, and they will be presenting the project or the program together this evening. Thank you.
I'm Lisa Vasquez, and this is.
I'm Leah Elliott. Hi.
Captain Tom Bolton, Nashua Police, Lieutenant Chadman McGregor, and Sergeant Eric Wu.
What's up, darling? I'm not sure what it was on. I can help you out, too.
So what we know is that increasingly there is a heavy burden on law enforcement agencies, in particularly officers, when it comes to behavioral health calls that are being received at the Police Department. There's also limited choices sometimes for officers responding to community situations, so without access to appropriate alternative, officers are often left with poor choices, things like leaving people in potential harmful situations, bringing them to the hospital or arresting them. Police and behavioral health collaborative team would incorporate specially-trained police officers and mental health workers to respond together to mental health calls. And according to the Nashua Police Department 2021 Annual Crime Report, the Nashua Police Department has improved the manner in which mental health-related incidents are documented to facilitate accurate analysis of future years, thank you for that. And what we have seen, not just in Nashua but across the country, is that there's been a decrease in early intervention services due to funding for mental health system, which leaves police departments to become the front line for many citizens suffering from mental illness. The department continues to make educating first responders a priority, and we see that in their goals. So goal number two of the Police Department is enhancing mental health literacy for everyone within the Police Department, and goal number three is increasing and creating and implementing a resource guide for our community. And in 2021, they received over 250 mental health-related calls. So what does, let's get it. Okay, so when we compare 2020 to 2021, what we saw was a 65% increase in IEA and IEH paperwork requests, and IEA means involuntary emergency admissions, and IEH means involuntary holds. And in, we also in 2021 saw a 93.3% increase in protective custody calls due to alcohol and drug use, a 54% increase in protective custody due to mental health and suicidal ideation, and 166% increase in protective custody due to suicide attempt. So the increase in service calls from the Police Department for mental health-related calls coupled with workforce capacity issues facing the mental health field creates the environment in which we exist today. This is the time to pilot this program so we can collaboratively answer these calls. So what does this program look like? It looks like us responding together. So the proposed staff from the Division of Public Health and Community Services would include myself, I am a licensed eligible master's level clinician, and Leah Elliott is a licensed social worker. We would spend 20 hours each dedicated to the Police Department, a set schedule to cover those hours has been allocated, and the Nashua Police Department would dispatch us with officers to a call that is deemed appropriate. So what's the benefit of having this pilot program? We can create training modules for the Police Department and work together to increase just education on mental health, signs, symptoms, ways to respond, and resources. We can continually assess how this program is going, do data collection, and have annual report and a resource guidance document for any future staff that is added. So the next steps are launching this program, which we've already been doing some write-alongs with the Police Department to see what it would look like, what it would be like interacting with the Police Department. Then we're going to write policies and procedures to better understand what is our role, what is the police role, and outline the roles and responsibilities of the police versus public health. The second, the third goal of the Police Department was create a resource guide, it's already been developed by the Public Health Department, it is available in the city website under the Community Connections Resource Guide, you can access that at any time, and it is regularly updated so that in case agencies stop providing services, start providing services, or change their phone number or staff, we can keep up with that information. So we continue to collect baseline data to identify what the key outcomes that we want to see. Some of the things that we want to see are decreased emergency department stays, decrease in repeat calls, less arrests, and more support for the police officers so that they don't feel unprepared to answer these mental health-related calls. And just following up, we want to continue keys management, select such as repeat callers to follow up with them, so we don't want to just go out, see people, and not follow up with them, we want to be able to keep connected with them, make sure that they are able to connect to services, so that we can also be a warm handoff to the behavioral health services that are available in our community.
So where the need came in from the Police Department, what we've identified is there's a large number of our calls do have a mental health nexus, and that can, even though the 250 was represented from actual capture data that, of calls were specifically designated as mental health calls, the number is in fact far greater than, and oftentimes they can be calls such as neighbor disputes, loud noise complaints, any form of other erratic behavior. So again, that, the number of 250 is actually quite small compared to where the actual number, the number falls, and so where, and how I've provided direction to the officers, where the, our partners in public health can help us is pretty much everywhere. There's really no set parameters of where they can't be used because there's a, other than of course violent situations or scenarios where they may be put in harm's way, of course we will not allow that to happen. But short of that, there's the, it's a pretty blank slate to where we can use and deploy our partners. That's in the immediacy where we're going in, responding, and they can help in those circumstances. Where I do see their greatest benefit, however, will be in follow-up services, and this is an area where I believe that as a Police Department, we are able to go in and see and triage a number of events, however, we, as an agency, in dealing with emergencies, have to move on to the next event, and there's a finite number of police officers handling a substantial amount of calls. To give an example of that is second shift, which is the shift we're dealing with right now, may average from anywhere from 130 to 150 calls to service, and that's divided up amongst 12 to 15 patrol officers. That's handling a great number of call volume with a shortened amount of staff, and that there's only so much you can do and so much attention you can give to each call before another emergency comes in. The follow-up piece to that, so the next day, and how we've identified this is going to work, is as we go through and we audit the call log from the day prior, which we do each shift, if there is a call in there where it's been identified that a person could benefit from services, Lisa and Leah will be able to get those calls, they'll be able to see what information is in there, that they may be able to connect with this person, and then get that person connected to services. And the hope with that is, we do run into the similar individuals that were, you know, that we will, that we'll work with day in and day out, and hopefully over time, if those individuals can eventually get connected with services, there becomes less strain on the system, and the people are actually starting to be connected to the people that they need to help with, and again, if they're connecting to either getting mental health, mental health treatment, if they're getting medical treatment, whatever the case may be, it then becomes less reliant upon the Police Department, and people are actually finding the help that they, the help that they need. Moving on beyond that, with the actual training that Lisa and Leah will be able to provide, again, there's always better ways to do things, there are subject matter experts, and bringing that into the Police Department, it will only, it'll only increase our literacy in this, in this field. I'm going to turn it over to Lieutenant McGregor for a few other remarks.
Of course. One of the things I would like to add to that we can kind of increase our efficiency here is kind of closing that loop here, right? So we have a police officer interfacing with an individual that's experiencing a mental health crisis, our options become limited at that time, and the best course of action is often not always an emergency room or taking enforcement action, right? But we only have so much time in which we can get that person de-escalated and in a position where they're willing to talk. Like closing that reaction gap and having the clinicians embedded with us to deploy them in a more rapid fashion will in turn increase our efficacy in this area. Obviously, with this program just starting out and in a pilot program, we will have, we'll see some significant benefits in that as well. The mental health literacy component that the Nashua Police Department has pushed forward over the last couple of years has been a priority of this administration as well as a previous administration. One of the things I would like to highlight is we have mental health first aid instructors within, I'm one of them. At the time I became a mental health first aid instructor, I was one of about 10 active police officers in the country that was a mental health first aid instructor, so that's a very, very good hat in our hand, and a very good feather in our cap here. We have about 100% of our officers trained in mental health first aid, we're just under about 100%, and that reason is with the new people that we've been hiring. We've been continuing hiring, continuing training in mental health first aid since 2019, which is something I'm very proud of. Additionally, we have close to 40% of our officers trained in crisis intervention training, which is put on through the state through a SAMSSA grant. We have close to 30 to 40% of our officers trained in that. The reason why I'm pushing out these numbers to you folks tonight is that is in line with some of the best practices that are endorsed by the International Association Chiefs of Police, and that's something that we've been building towards for many years here. I look at this clinician program as something that I saw it down the road for us obtaining, and the fact that we're at it at this point in time truly speaks to our leadership and the collaboration that we're able to get this program up and running. I think the future is bright in solving this problem, and frankly, we need it. When we factor in substance use disorder, which is a recognized mental illness, our call volumes with a mental call volumes with a mental health nexus absolutely skyrockets. And we need to meet these folks where they're at and to continue to provide them the services that they need. So that's what I had.
Sergeant Butler, there you go.
I'd like to add a point. We are aware of some other police departments within the state that are doing this model, and we have sought some interactions with them to seek some technical assistance. We met with a social worker in Dover, New Hampshire, who is in a similar role as well as down in Fitchburg, Massachusetts. So I really do see this being a model potentially that is incorporated into all police departments, hopefully within the country. So it's great to be able to help this pilot program in Nashville and be one of the first cities in the state that is doing this. And I think that if, that's why we really want to make sure we're doing this slowly so that we're doing it well and so that we can be a model for other cities in the state as well.
Did you want to take questions?
Sure.
Right here.
The two clinicians in the room, raise their hands first. Okay. I'm gonna go with Alderman.
Well, thank you, Madam President. This is so wonderful. I'm sure you know I'm also an LICSW, and I'm a clinician. I do not apply my trade here in the chamber, though. But this is, it's an amazing program that you guys are initiating, and the fact to have two clinicians partnering with the police department. I myself specialize in treatment-resistant and major depression, almost used acronyms, major depression disorder, suicidality, and personality disorders, and they are so intertwined in the calls, especially when we have the person with a personality disorder calling, saying that are harming themselves, and they put the police in a position of, are they gonna do it, are they not gonna do it? And then you have clinicians that you can talk to, to actually determine if it's gonna be a reality or not. Very complex stuff that I just mentioned, but the fact that this program is existing is amazing. I too am a mental health first aid trainer, and I've CIT and CTI certified. I ran emergency services, psychiatric services here in New Hampshire and Massachusetts. So the fact that you guys are doing this program for the city is amazing. And I bet everyone was hoping I wouldn't be here tonight. A couple of questions. Would you be able to initiate an IEA if you needed to in collaboration or with the Mental Health Center? Or is there anyone that's a JP that would send someone? Or do you just protect custody? What's the, is policy still being worked out?
I believe that the IEA paperwork does have a spot for a clinician. However, there does need to be a medical professional that signs as part of that. So unfortunately, we would not be able to do like a direct admit, say, for example. And there still also needs to be a medical component. So unfortunately, we could assist with a paperwork, like if there was a family that wanted to fill paperwork out on an individual, we would be able to assist that family of how the wording is, and we could sign off as the clinician, but there's more than what signature required on that paperwork.
Can I add a call? Where I believe that another place that this is gonna make us a lot more efficient is with Lisa and Leah being embedded with us, they're gonna understand how the officers communicate, and they're gonna understand how the ultimate receiving facility needs to receive that information. And I hate to say it, but translate the scenario adequately to hit the parameters to go from that. So I think that's another area where it's really gonna co, yeah, totally, it won't coesin.
You had a follow-up? I was afraid of that.
And when you're doing the after, the clinical case management after the fact, and are you beyond the Mental Health Center, because we know, I know, that they have a nine-month waitlist for outpatient. Of course, ACT is different. If they qualify for the ACT team, they can get in right away. But some of these folks may not qualify because they may not have Medicaid, or they might have private insurance, and it takes a while to get Medicaid to qualify for ACT, various things that this guy knows more about than I do, actually. But are you partnering with more than just one agency to connect them to resources after the fact? Because we know the major agencies, so the Mental Health Centers and the Harbor Care, but are you working with other smaller nonprofits and organizations to make sure they have access to a minimum outpatient or psychiatric medication?
I know that there are some agencies that will do that, and we can try to help within the parameters of the agencies that we have to work with. I think our hope is that we could potentially be a small bridge until the person could connect with that service. So again, if we do know it's someone that is, has a lot of interactions with the police, and they do just need someone that maybe safely, if in a safe situation, of course, helps stabilize them until they can get into longer treatment, we could provide that. However, I don't feel like, unfortunately, with just the agencies and the way I know it, they're all having workforce shortage. And so some of the things that we're doing behind the scenes to try to assist with that is helping with supervision, helping to provide training so that people have information, making sure that Nashville's a trauma-informed city. So it's really hard, I think, I don't think that we can necessarily work with anybody to have things move along faster, but I think what we want to see is to be a very stable bridge until they can get there.
And it all depends on a person's insurance, like you said, and their availability for transportation, and so many other factors that until we get to know the person, we won't really know. So it really is a case-by-case basis what, you know, counseling center, treatment provider is acceptable to that person based on their insurance, under symptoms, and all of that. So it's just, you know how complicated that all is. So we'll do our best to connect people to the agency that is appropriate to them, and we plan on providing, like Leah said, a bridge until they can be able to receive those services.
One last question followed by a statement.
Okay.
Would the city be pursuing credentialing with insurance companies to recoup insurance remittance?
So this is a great goal of mine. I would love to see public health be a Medicaid provider because I know how to do those things. I am, I do work a little bit in our private practice, but I can't, I can work independently. So because I work for technically public health, I think public health as an entity would need to become a Medicaid provider. So I know that's something we'd like to do.
It's a process, and we'll see how it goes and see what it takes to get there. It's not something that we can just say right now we would, we are able to do or not do at this moment in time.
If you ever need technical assistance, here's the statement. I think you guys are gonna save a lot of lives. I think that's very important, getting people who are suicide, experiencing suicidal ideation out of that mindset, or if they're struggling with drugs and alcohol, and getting them away from police involvement so they're not treated in jail, which jails are the major mental health treatment system in the entire country. Because these guys have no choice if someone becomes violent, and to have clinicians involved really will help mitigate that, mitigate recidivism, and provide diversionary care to the costly emergency department, overall saving taxpayers lots of money. That's my politician statement.
Alderman Lopez.
So I just wanted to comment that I learned a lot about the police department's training in mental health first aid and crisis intervention at the Citizens Academy, and they're doing another one September 26th. So it's not as far away as you think it is. It's the week after next. Anybody who's interested maybe in the public in attending that, or any of my fellow Aldermen, you're not gonna be doing like a bunch of off-center courses or push-ups or whatever. You're just learning a lot about what the different services our police department does and is capable of doing, and you're meeting the people who do it. And that is invaluable knowledge for anybody who's a public representative or an elected official, so that you can give accurate information to your constituents. So I highly encourage it. Just contact the police department and ask for Barbara Costa, and she can get you signed up. I also would want to note that Barbara Costa is the pilot to the pilot to the pilot of this program, because one of the things that's being touched on that I think is important to note is that there are different ideologies running different industries. There's different professional standards and priorities and capabilities that come out of that. And being able to put public health and a clinical perspective into the same workspace as our law enforcement professionals and our police department is going to be an invaluable exchange of information on both sides. I think our police officers will have a better understanding of how to effectively direct people towards services that are more appropriate for their needs, and I think we'll be able to intervene in health systems and health emergencies that we don't, we may not fully catch right now because the capability and the priorities are a little bit different. So I think those are very, very important, that aspect of exchanging professional practices. I was also interested in, Ms. Vasquez, I'm sorry, I'm here to salutation, but you had mentioned that you were licensed eligible. Is that, does that relate back to the recent changes from the Board of Mental Health, opening it up so that master's level candidates can have probationary licenses? Or can you speak to a little bit about that?
It means that I'm going for a licensure, and I have my master's degree already. I just need to have those supervised hours, so.
I just wanted to touch on that a little bit because I know there's a major capacity issue with mental health providers right now. Greater Nashville doesn't have a waiting list by like, because they think it's fun. It's because they literally don't have the staff to move things faster than they can be moved, and they don't have the capacity to meet people, you know, more than, you know, say you have 40 hours a work week, how many people can you really meet? Like maybe 30. So there's a shortage of mental health care professionals, but there, there may be more people who are eligible for supporting these different programs now that there's been change at the state level, allowing, maybe unclogging some of the drains, I guess, when it comes to trying to get your licensure. And I hope that that is something that will benefit this moving forward, because I think it'll be a pilot program, but I think the need speaks to itself in Nashville. We have a lot of mental health care facilities and providers and group homes. We have a lot of different nonprofit organizations focusing on individual needs, but on the whole, we have a lot of people who are in need, and we have a lot of people who want to help. We just need to be able to interface them all in the same setting and in a safe manner. So I applaud the police department's leadership in this area and their willingness to take those steps, because when they were first discussing this, you know, our community watch at Kirby and Breeze, what we were finding is that both sides already had a lot of experience and already done a lot of thought, you know, in terms of, oh, well, I used to do this in another department, or I think this is a great thing to pursue, or, you know, I think this is an objective that our department can work on. That kind of collaboration is what we need in Nashville. It makes more effective programs, it makes more efficiencies, and it makes sure our people, our residents and our constituents are cared for in a more effective manner. So I want to congratulate both of you on that. And if there's anything I can do as Alderman to support this, feel free to reach out.
Thank you.
Alderman Kelly.
Okay, thank you. I also am very excited to have this come forward in Nashville. I think it's an incredible program and takes a lot of foresight from everyone involved to really think about how we can meet the needs of our communities as they've been changing. So I'm really excited that you guys are doing this, that we'll be a pilot and potentially an example for other communities. I have a couple of questions and a statement. So question one is very pedantic, I would say, but I just, can you talk me through what it looks like? Do you go in the car with them? Do you, like, how, what does it look like to have the co-responder team, like on a anecdotal level?
First of all, good evening. I appreciate your time tonight. So right now, it is in infancy phase. It's in the beginning, so we're still trying to work out the kinks to it. So basically, right now, when they show up, they have an office, or they'll be positioned somewhere in the department where if there's a need for a mental health call, or someone is out of control that we believe could be on something or is in a crisis, what we'll, what we have been doing as a supervisor would bring them out to the call, or if, depending where in the city it is, one of the sector cars would come pick them up, usually like an FTO, a training officer, would bring them out so they can interact and get involved in the call. The number one thing from patrol standpoint, obviously, is everyone's safety from the family involved, to now the clinicians and the officers. That is by far the number one thing. So we would control the situation and then have their expertise come in. So that's how we're handling it right now. I do think it will evolve, it will progress, but I can tell you that the department's very excited about this.
Great, thank you. If I could follow up, please? So my second piece is a little bit connected to that, but also, being a pilot, like, how are you going to evaluate and assess changes as you're growing from infancy into really making this a program that's robust and working really well?
I think it's, I think it was mentioned in the slides, but really going through the calls, evaluating, evaluating how it was handled, how effective it was to have a clinician come out. I think statistically, too, looking at it, were we able to help someone go to the hospital that maybe in the beginning didn't want to go to the hospital? Or if, like, let's be honest, when the police officer goes, we get a lot of training. We're very thankful, we're very fortunate to have that, but I think our training can only go so far as they're professionals. So I think evaluating every call, like we go through the call log each day and see where it took us. And I think the other thing, too, which we haven't done yet, I think the follow-up work. Are they able to reach out to the person afterwards? Are they making connection? Are they able to get them the resources? And then we can document that. I think that would be a true evaluation of it. Obviously, nothing's perfect, but it'll be growing pains, but we'll get through it.
If I could, one more. My, actually, my last statement follow-up was right along those lines, is the idea of the follow-up, I think, is really important. It's like, if you guys are the ER, then you're the PCPs, right, who are doing that backend work. The thing that I think we need to work on as a community is, you said in your presentation, that all those services have become harder and harder to get. So while we may have that opportunity to follow up with these people, who are we gonna send them to? And I think that's a piece that we're not all gonna solve overnight, but how do we make sure that we have those resources so that we have somewhere to refer them?
Is there a complex problem that needs a longer-term solution?
Yeah, for sure. Thank you for your work.
Alderman Tebow, and then we're gonna have to get back to our meeting.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
You're welcome.
So just one thing. So I want to thank CHO Bagley and Chief Rourke for doing this, and all you guys for being part of this. I met with Chief Carrigan two years ago, probably almost exactly two years ago, and he was talking about the mental health crisis and getting all the officers that kind of training, and it's great that you guys are there, and this is, to me, an extension of that. Is there a way that, you know, in a few months, or however long it takes, to kind of get an update on how the pilot's going and if it's working? And, because I, I think it will work, and I hope it's very successful. I think you guys are in the, going in the right direction, so I would love to see how it's progressing. And also, if we could get, can we get both presentations we've had tonight sent to us as well? That would be great. Thank you.
I would like to thank you all. I know that this is great work you're doing, and I'm not surprised a bit because we have a fabulous police department and a fabulous public health department, and it's no wonder you got together to do something really fantastic for the community. So thank you very much for coming in tonight, and good luck with your, with your program.
Thank you.
Reading minutes of previous meetings. There being no objection, I'll declare the minutes of the special and regular Board of Aldermen meetings of June 20th, July 11th, July 24th, August 8th, August 21st, and August 28th be accepted, placed on file, and the reading suspended. Communications requiring only procedural actions and written reports from liaisons.
Communication has been received from Mayor Jim Donchus regarding report on surplus and overlay fiscal year 2024. Communication has been received from Julian Long, Urban Programs Manager, regarding Community Development Block Grant CARES Act reallocation HVAC projects.
There being no objection, I'll accept the communications and place them on file. Public comment, period for public comment relative to items expected to be acted upon this evening, we have Matt Sullivan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the board, Matt Sullivan, Community Development Division Director. I wanted to take a few moments to address a piece of legislation on your agenda this evening, R 23155. This is relative to the acceptance of grant funds from the Invest New Hampshire Housing Program in the amount of $450,000. And this is intended to be directed through a memorandum of understanding if the grant funds are accepted directly to the 249 Main Street housing project. And if you're not familiar with this development, it's under construction right now, and it will create 45 affordable housing units right in the downtown core of the city of Nashville. And we're fortunate to have a development partner in Neighbor Works Southern, New Hampshire, who has a tremendous track record of performance in the community and has a tremendous track record with the creation of affordable housing. They're undertaking this project currently. This grant is very unique in that the monies are coming from the state of New Hampshire and are intended to be directed by the municipality to an affordable housing purpose as they see fit. The legislation before you this evening actually contemplates accepting those funds and directing as really, directing them as a capital investment back to the project itself in the interest of preserving those housing affordability. The city was actually specifically eligible to request these funds because of the fact that these affordable housing units were being created in the city, and I just want to be clear about that. We were only eligible to apply for this grant because Neighbor Works was undertaking the affordable housing project that it was, and therefore, I believe that the purpose of putting those monies back into the project is more than appropriate. But the specific reason that I'm speaking this evening is that I am before you requesting a first and second reading in front of the board this evening. As Director Bagley, who's just recently walked out of the room, often requests, we have a very strict governor and council deadline that we need to meet, and as is the case sometimes with these grant, with this grant legislation, I'm hoping to meet that deadline in the coming week. Therefore, the request for first and second reading before you this evening. Therefore, the request for first and second reading before you this evening. I'd also mention that this project is familiar to the board. You've actually contemplated home funds being directed to the project in the past, and so this project has been discussed at the Human Affairs Committee precedent to this consideration this evening. And while I apologize, Alderman Lopez, that the committee will not, hopefully not hear about the project again. I'm hopeful that he'll consider support of the legislation before you this evening. And just to be clear again, this legislation does two things. It accepts the funds and allows the mayor to enter into a memorandum of understanding to direct the monies to the project itself, which we hope will happen over the coming months. Again, I want to acknowledge that Neighbor Works Southern New Hampshire is represented this evening by Jennifer Vodney, and we're happy to answer any questions that the board or Madam Chair or the mayor may have this evening, but I'm hoping to seek your support and approval of this legislation before the board this evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Steve Buxton.
Steve Buxton, Chief of Nashville Fire Rescue. Thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight and speak to our proposed collective bargaining agreement between the City of Nashua and IFF Local 789, known to you as R-23151. Quick overview, there's a 10% colonel for all of our employees over the term of the four-year contract. There's many language updates that clean, that clean up a lot of the language that's been put in throughout the years. We're very good at putting things in, updating the contract. We're very bad at pulling things out that don't belong in there, so we update a lot of stuff that'll make it a more efficient document for us to operate in. There's four MOUs, memorandums of understanding that have been incorporated into it. They cover military leave, administrative overtime, daylight savings time, and the promotional process. This contract will also establish a Health Trust Committee to review health care and potential savings for both the city and our members. The establishment of a medical expense reimbursement program for our members, which will be an obvious benefit to them in retirement, but it is also going to be a great tool for us in recruitment and retention of our employees. It's worth noting that this contract hasn't been signed yet, and both myself and President Houli have already received inquiries from people that are interested in coming to our organization due to this benefit. There's the establishment of language for the captain of EMS position within our organization and the establishment of an in-service training program which will allow us to remove a member from service and send them to training on certain topics to, to prepare them for advancement within our organization. Currently, the fire service is what I refer to as wide open. Organizations are offering sign-on bonuses, relocation bonuses, and they bring members into the, into their organizations with seniority, rank, and increased pay. Recruitment now requires a more intense effort than ever before. I am proud to say that while we do recruit new firefighters, we do not engage in any of the tactics that I have mentioned above. Instead, we would like to focus on our members that are here now and create pathways for them to realize success and financial gain. This in turn will assist us in making our organization successful, which results in better service for our community. And some of the items I have listed here tonight are the result of much collaboration and the efforts to come to terms on this contract. Tonight, I ask for your support for R-23151, and when it comes up, if you have any questions or concerns, I'd be more than happy to speak to them for you. Thank you.
Thank you. Communications requiring final approval?
Communication has been received from Mayor Jim Donchess regarding tax increment financing development program, Vanessa Hangan, Brussels, VHB.
Alderman Govea.
Thank you, Madam President. I move to approve Design Services Amendment Two for the Cotton Mill Transfer Bridge BDA project with Vanessa Hangan, Bernson, VHB. In the amount of $34,871, funding will be through Department 183 Economic Development Fund 53107, Architect and Engineering Services/Riverfront Tiff Fund.
You've heard the motion. Discussion on that motion. Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries.
Communication has been received from Mayor Jim Donchess regarding tax increment financing development program, Foyle, Tanner, and Associates.
Alderman Timmons.
Thank you, Madam President. I move to approve the construction engineer phase services for ADA compliance assets to the north end of the Assistant Trust Bridge that spans the Nashua River in the downtown with Foyle, Tanner, and Associates in the amount of $253,991. Funding will be through the Department 183 Economic Development Fund 53107, Architect and Engineering Services Riverfront Tiff Fund.
You've heard the motion. Is there a discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries.
Communication has been received from Mayor Jim Donchess regarding tax increment finance development program, ED Sweat, Inc.
Alderman Moran.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion to approve construction services with ED Sweat, Inc. in the amount of $1,320,540. Funding will be through Department 183 Economic Development Fund 53107, Architect and Engineering Services/Riverfront Tiff Fund, $1,020,540, and 53107 Architect and Engineering Services, New Hampshire Department, Cotton Mill, B-R-I-D?
Bridge.
Bridge. Thank you. $300,000, that's my motion.
You've heard the motion. Is there a discussion on that motion? Alderman Lopez.
Just to clarify, because we've had a couple of these motions go through here, the public probably is aware there's a ramp on one side of the Cotton Mill Bridge, there isn't one on the other side. Originally, I think it was contemplated that people would go into Cotton Mill and then take a little mini elevator down, and that has not worked out. So we are working on adding a bridge on the, a ramp on the other side so that people who are in scooters or ramps or differently-abled generally can get onto the bridge and then off on the other side instead of finding a little surprise over there. Additionally, the funding here is specific to increases in tax revenue specific to that area that are paying for it, so it's not coming out of general funds or raising general taxes. I may correct that if I'm wrong.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Petitions?
Done.
Nominations, appointments, and elections.
Cultural Connections Committee, Bernadette Melton Plant, 41 Parrish Hill Drive, Nashua, New Hampshire, 03063, term to expire April 30th, 2025. Planning Board, Cameron Green, new appointment, 82 Amherst Street, Nashua, New Hampshire, 03064, term to expire May 31st, 2024. Maggie Harper, reappointment, 3 Taft Street, Nashua, New Hampshire, 03060, term to expire March 31st, 2026. Lawrence Hirsch, reappointment, 12 Salmon Brook Drive, Nashua, New Hampshire, 03062, term to expire March 31st, 2026. Zoning Board of Adjustment, A. John J. Minkarot, alternate to member, 13 Mount Pleasant Street, Nashua, New Hampshire, 03064, term to expire September 1st, 2025.
There being no objection, I'll accept the appointments. By the mayor is read and refer them to the Personnel Administrative Affairs Committee. Without objection, I would like to suspend the rules to allow for the introduction of three new appointments to the Board of Building and Fire Code Appeals.
Board of Building and Fire Codes Appeals, Scott Cody, new appointment, 39 10B Drive, Nashua, New Hampshire, 03062, term to expire October 13th, 2026. Carl DuBois, new appointment, 31 Holbrook Drive, Nashua, New Hampshire, 03062, term to expire September 13th, 2026. Jared Slattery, new appointment, 17 Berkeley Street, Nashua, New Hampshire, 03064, term to expire November 13th, 2026.
There being no objection, I'll accept the appointments by the mayor is read and refer them to the Personnel Administrative Affairs Committee. Reports of committees, there being no objection, I will declare the reports of the July 24th, August 14th, and August 28th, 2023 Budget Review Committee, accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I will declare the reports of the June 28th and August 23rd, 2023 Committee on Infrastructure, be accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I'll declare the reports of the July 19th, August 2nd, and August 16th, 2023 Finance Committee be accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I will declare the reports of the July 17th and August 21st, 2023 Human Affairs Committee be accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I'll declare the report of July 3rd and September 5th Personnel Administrative Affairs Committee be accepted and placed on file. Confirmation of mayor's appointments?
Ethics Review Committee.
There being no objection, I will confirm the new appointment of John Fisher, 21 Indiana Drive, Nashua, with a term to expire June 13th, 2026, to the Ethics Review Committee. I don't see John here. He will be sworn in at a later date.
Cultural Connections Committee.
There being no objection, I'll confirm the new appointment of Lynn Boyer, 9 Northfield Road, Amherst, with a term to expire September 30th, 2024, and the reappointment of Donna Marceau, 37 Pinewood Road, Hudson, with a term to expire February 28th, 2026, to the Cultural Connections Committee. Are any of those individuals here this evening come forward to take the oath of office? Any of you that I mentioned? Right over here by the attorney and then...
Raise your right hand, please. You solemnly swear that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all of the duties incumbent upon you as a member of the Cultural Connection Committee of the City of Nashua according to the best of your abilities and agreeably to the rules and regulations of the city charter and the constitution and laws of the state of New Hampshire. So help you God.
Aye.
Thank you.
And Donna Marceau will be sworn in at a later date.
Zoning Board of Adjustment.
There being no objection, I'll confirm the reappointment of Jay Minkara, 13 Mount Pleasant Street, Nashua, with a term to expire September 11th, 2026, to the Zoning Board of Adjustment. Is Jay here this evening? Mr. Minkara? Nope, he will be sworn in at a later date. Unfinished business resolutions.
Second reading of R-23-136 relative to the transfer of $95,000 from Department 122 Information Technology to Department 120 Technology Maintenance.
Alderman Sullivan.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion for final passage of R-23136. And could I speak to it, please?
You could.
Thank you very much. I think it was a week and a half ago, there are a few resolutions that you're going to see in your packet tonight, moving money around. This is all for fiscal year 23, basically truing up the books, if we will. This doesn't impact fiscal year 2024, which we approved back in June. So this, you know, this simply is moving money from one department to the other. There was an overage from one department and then some of the expenses incurred from that same department. This is simply moving money to trip the books at the end of the year.
Thank you. Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, and Resolution 23136 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of R-23-137 relative to the transfer of $6,000 from Department 171 Community Services to Department 173 Environmental Health.
Alderman Kelly.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to move for final passage of R-23137.
Motion is for final passage. Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, and Resolution 23137 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of R-23-138 relative to the transfer of $220,000 from Department 194, contingency account 70100, general contingency to Department 198, inter-fund transfers account 89725, transfer to City Retirement Trust Fund.
Alderman Karen.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion for final passage of R-23-138.
Motion is for final passage. Discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, and Resolution 23138 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of R-23-139 relative to the acceptance of $200,000 from the New Hampshire Department of Safety Homeland Security Grant Program.
Alderman Cle.
Thank you. Madam President, I'd like to make a motion for final passage of R-23-139.
Motion is for final passage. Further discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, and Resolution 23139 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of R-23-140 relative to the acceptance and appropriation of $3 million from the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development Community Planning Grant Program for the reconstruction of the Nashua Library Plaza area.
Alderman Lopez.
I'd like to make a motion for final passage of R-23140 by, by roll call pursuant to Section 49, Charter Section 49.
You've heard the motion. Is there a discussion on that motion? Seeing none, would the clerk call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderman Moran.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Como.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Govea.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Toyo.
Yes.
Alderman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Wilshire.
Yes.
Fifteen yeas, zero nays.
That motion carries, and Resolution 23140 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of R-23-141, amending the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development Annual Action Plan for Fiscal Year 2024 relative to the Community Development Block Grant CDVJ.
Alderman Cle.
Thank you. Madam President, I motion for final passage of R-23-141.
Motion is for final passage. Discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, and Resolution 23141 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of R-23-142, establishing a capital reserve fund for the purpose of funding major repairs, replacing furniture, fixtures, and equipment, and making capital improvements to the Nashua Center for the Arts Facility.
Alderman O'Brien.
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion for final passage of R-23-142.
You've heard the motion. Discussion on that motion. Alderman Cle.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to clarify, I saw on social media a number of people that were quite confused by this, thinking that we were taking taxpayer dollars and putting it into this fund when we just built this new building and so on, and that we, we had to do all these repairs. And, and that's not the case. This is kind of a, a reserve fund, and the monies that will be put into this will be from a certain percentage, 10% of the, the, the art centers, food and beverages, 10% of the gross sponsorship revenues, 50% of the brand, the NPAC, brand merchandise revenues, such as like branded mugs, t-shirts, and things like that, and the voluntary $1 per, per ticket would be put into this. Each of those categories would be capped at $25,000, so there's potentially $100,000 per year going in there. I think it was discussed at the, at the meeting that this, this was heard for the first time, was that this is the initial go-around with this contract, and when we renegotiate, we're probably bringing things up higher, but when you start something off, you have to kind of do things such as this. So that's what this, this capital reserve fund is, nothing more than to take care of some things that could be happening in the future, and we don't get a big bill and have no money in the bank to pay for it. So it will not come out of the taxpayer funds, it should come out of this, as long as we've been planning properly. So, thank you.
Alderman Sullivan.
Thank you. I echo everything that my colleague just said. This was, I dug into the agreement a little bit. This is something that we had to do per the agreement. I'm glad that we acted on it. I think that the Performing Arts Center, brand-new building downtown, centerpiece of the city, this sets up an account that basically takes care of it. Obviously, there are no, I would hope there are no repairs that need to be done here and now, since it just opened, but down the road, as mileage gets on the building, so on and so forth, we have money here that, this is an interest-bearing account, so if you put money in it, it grows. So this is an opportunity, I think this is, this is great, you know, because we always talk about it around the horseshoe as far as what we do with the buildings. We build them, we don't take care of them. This account does that.
Alderman Lopez.
So I just want to point out that we are learning. So I just want to point out that we are learning something because we're doing this at the beginning of the National Center for the Arts, and last year, we finally got around to making a fund receptacle for the Court Street Theater, which is much older, has also been the centerpiece for a lot of major events and major activities, but needs to have some kind of organizing plan and strategic intention behind it to make sure that it can be self-sustaining and sustainable as an entity. I know Mayor Dontas is working with stakeholders in that area and the different theater groups that work there to try to create that kind of a situation, and I think it's important to remember that we still have the Court Street Theater in somewhat of the shadow of the National Center for the Arts, which functions more as an economic anchor, but Court Street Theater is our community theater. So I'm glad we're learning, I'm glad we're putting money aside in advance for the National Center for the Arts, and I think that learning that we're doing is also going to benefit our other arts programs.
Alderman Kelly?
Thank you, just want to echo some of the comments that were made in terms of this being a great opportunity for us to, you know, cut and pace as we move forward and put new buildings into the city. It came up a lot during budget that there have been, you know, buildings and things that we would love to maintain, but because we are conservative with our budgeting, we haven't done that. So starting off by putting together a fund from the beginning is just a really smart way of continuing to make sure that we take care of our city.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries and Resolution 23-142 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of R-23-143 authorizing the sale of a tax-dated property located at 14 Meadowway.
Alderman Como?
Yes, thank you, Madam President, I'd like to make a motion for final passage of R-23-143, and I'd like to speak to it briefly.
Alderman Como?
Thank you, so there's going to be five of these in a row that are basically, the Committee on Infrastructure authorized the tax-collecting department to deed and sell these properties for non-payment of their taxes. So we went through a list of eligible properties, ultimately, we ended up on these five that had a long, long history of unpaid taxes, some upwards of hundreds of thousands of dollars. So the ability to sell these will give the city the opportunity to recoup some of that lost revenue for those unpaid taxes and get these properties off of our books so that we're no longer the owner of record.
Alderman O'Brien?
Yeah, thank you, Madam President, I'd like to echo just briefly what Alderman Como said. All this, these five places were passed unanimously by the Committee of Infrastructure. As Chairman of that committee, this is one of the hardest things that I had to do. I think we all agree that the City of Nashua is not in the purpose, not in the business of taking property, but when you have people for various different reasons, and some of them are personal, that they find themselves in the riz, you gotta have some teat to the law. And basically, these properties have been on the dole or in the riz for approximately 10 years, so it's high time that we come to adjust this, this is for the betterment, and it doesn't mean a solution to each of these properties, can't be reached at any particular point in the negotiations, but it's a start in the right direction. So, thank you, Madam President.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
That motion carries and Resolution 23-143 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of R-23-144 authorizing the sale of a tax-dated property located at 17 Jackson Street.
Alderman Dowd?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion for final passage of R-23-144 for the reasons previously stated.
You've heard the motion, discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries and Resolution 23-144 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of R-23-145 authorizing the sale of a tax-dated property located at 19 New Cyril's Road.
Alderman Govea?
Thank you, Madam President, I move for final passage of R-23-145 for the same reasons as stated before.
You've heard the motion, is there discussion on that motion? Alderman Sullivan?
Thank you, Madam President. This particular property is a hot-button issue in Ward 9. I am, I'm pleased to see that it's come to this point, but as my colleague to my left had stated before, there's stories behind all of these. And as I assume this position, I understood the story a little bit more. It is something that needs to be updated, I'm glad we're moving it forward, but my heart goes out to, you know, the family that went through some hardship here. But I'm looking to the future where this property gets turned over and gets looking nice again and safe, actually, for the rest of the board, so thanks.
Thank you. Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
That motion carries and Resolution 23-145 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of R-23-146 authorizing the sale of a tax-dated property located at 115-117 West Hollis Street.
Alderman O'Brien?
Thank you, Madam President, I'd like to make a motion for final passage of R-23-146 for what was discussed earlier. Thank you.
You've heard the motion, is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
That motion carries and Resolution 23-146 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of R-23-147 authorizing the sale of a tax-dated property located at L. Bridge Street.
Alderman Como?
Yes, thank you, Madam President, I would move for final passage of R-23-147.
You've heard the motion, is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
That motion carries and Resolution 23-147 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of R-23-148 relative to the fiscal year 2023 transfer of $150,000 from Department 132 assessing to Department 198 Interfund Transfers.
Alderman Sullivan?
Thank you, Madam President, I'd like to make a motion for final passage of R-23-148.
Motion is for final passage. Discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries and Resolution 23-148 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of R-23-149 amending the scope of the Park Rehabilitation Expendable Trust Fund in transferring funds into the Park Rehabilitation Expendable Trust Fund from the East Side Recreational Facilities Expendable Trust Fund for the purpose of making infrastructure repairs to the Sargent Avenue Park area.
Alderman Como?
Yes, thank you, Madam President, I'd like to make a motion for final passage of R-23-149 by roll call pursuant RSA 3411. Can I like to speak to it?
Alderman Como?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. So there's two main portions to this piece of legislation. The first is that the Park Rehab Expendable Trust Fund, when it was initially created, was specifically named to rehabilitate 11 parks within the City of Nashua. Most of those parks, if not all of them, have since been rehabilitated, but because of the way this fund was set up, naming those 11 parks specifically, the money that was in this fund could only be used to fund those parks and wouldn't be able to be used for other parks within the city. Since those parks have since been rehabilitated, the Department of Public Works, Park and Recreation, in discussions with them, we decided that it would be, it would make more sense for the city if we open that up to use that fund for any parks that Park and Rec had jurisdiction over for the maintenance and care of. So the first part of this would be to eliminate that restriction of those 11 named parks and make this fund available for any park within the city. The second part of the legislation is to fund a project on Sargent Ave. We found some money in a trust fund that hadn't been used since it was created, and since it was sitting there gaining interest, we decided to put it to good use. I talked with my colleagues from Ward 3 and Ward 7, and I'd like to thank Alderman Sullivan for finding the trust fund in his deep dive through the budget earlier in this year and pointed it out to me that the money was available. And so we all got together, talked about how best to accomplish this project that Parks and Rec wanted to do, you know, working with Alderman Karen because the money in the trust fund that we're going to be using comes from her ward, and Alderman Cle because the park that we're going to be fixing up is in Ward 3. I wasn't able to attend the Budget Review Committee meeting where we talked about this, but I did watch it afterwards, and I wanted to thank Alderman Clemmons, he said something that really stuck out to me, he said that this is how a government should work. The fact that four different Alderman, Ward Aldermen from four different wards, you know, three political ideologies got together and found a way to get this project off the ground and get it to work is exactly the way we should be doing things here in Nashua. And so I appreciate all the support from everybody that co-sponsored it and spoke on its behalf at the Budget Review Committee, and I look forward to passage tonight.
Thank you. Discussion on that motion? Alderman Tivo?
Thank you, Madam Chair, or Madam President. You know, I don't often give kudos like I should, but I want to give special props to Alderman Sullivan. I know that we've talked a lot in the horseshoe about trust funds, and why do we have so many, and how come we can't use the money for this one and that one and all this, and like yourself, I would not have supported adding this to the budget just to fund it without doing it a creative way. So I just appreciate that you were able to go in there and find something that we could change and turn into something where we could actually use that money towards this because that's what the trust fund should be, right? It should be there for us to use, and when you have trust funds, money in it, and you can't use it, what good is that? So thank you for finding that, and thank you for bringing that forward, so it's something that I will absolutely support tonight, and I thank you for that.
Further discussion? Alderman Jettie?
Thank you, Madam President. Well, I hate to throw cold water on this kumbaya moment here, but I would like to make a motion to amend by striking the last paragraph, which transfers the $210,000 from the Expendable Trust Fund Number 7057 to the Expendable Trust Fund 7058, and I'd like to speak to that.
Alderman Jettie?
So, you know, I apologize for not having been at the meeting, but I was on vacation, and I hope you don't penalize me for that, but I want to point out to my fellow Aldermen that the history of this $750,000, which is in Expendable Trust Fund 7057 East Side Recreational Facilities. So this came about because the, you know, that project off of Bridge Street was originally called Renaissance, I think it's now called Riverfront Landing, I think is the new name for it. So there, you know, they, part of their plan was to, was to build a recreational field for the use of that neighborhood, which would include the residents, the children who lived at Riverfront Landing, and also, there was a, at the time, there was a proposal for another apartment complex between Bridge Street and Temple Street, and then, of course, you know, the proposed renovation of Henry Hanger Building, and, you know, this is all before the asphalt plant was mentioned or discussed, and the developer of that Riverfront Landing, you know, had intended to acquire some additional property, you know, owned by someone else, and was never able to close that deal. So, you know, he came to the Business and Industrial Finance Authority and said, I say he, they, it, said that they were having trouble making the project work economically without that additional, having, being able to build apartments or on that additional property. And so they asked the city, you know, would the city, instead of their building this recreational facility, would the city sell them that land, which is the land off of Sanders Street, I think it is, and for a million dollars? And the city, you know, agreed to do that, and the million dollars was supposed to be taken by the city to build some kind of recreational facility to replace that, the facility that the Riverfront was going to build. The Business Industrial Finance Authority wanted $250,000 of that to support, financially support their endeavors to bring new business to the city, and which some of us opposed, but a compromise was reached where Business and Industrial Finance Authority got their 250, and the 750,000 was put into this trust fund for the specific purpose of building some type of recreational facility in that neighborhood. And the resolution, you know, defined that neighborhood to, you know, south of the river, the Nashua River, east of Main Street, west of the Merrimack River, and north of Salmon So, you know, it was kind of a larger area than that particular neighborhood, but, you know, there were some of us that were arguing that, you know, that this should be reserved to provide recreational facilities for that neighborhood, which doesn't have any. And if the plans go according to, according to plan, you know, we continue to develop residential properties, you're going to have more and more people, you know, looking for places to recreate. And so this 750,000, you know, was just not sitting there for the, you know, general taking. I appreciate the efforts of, you know, Alderman Sullivan and Alderman Como to, you know, to think what they thought was found money, but this, that money has a specific purpose, you know, and how much is it going to cost us to provide a recreational field or facility or something in that area? You know, and you're going to take, you know, 200, over, was it 201,000 from, 210,000 from that 750, you know, and so, you know, now you're, you know, you're even farther away from the ability to provide that recreational facility that we were trying to preserve. So I'm not against expanding the Park Rehabilitation purview. I think it's a great, a great idea, I agree with that. I'm not against improving the Sargent Avenue Tennis Courts, but I am against using the money that we reserved for that particular neighborhood and using it for, you know, a completely different neighborhood. I know it's not my ward, and maybe some people think it's none of my business, but, you know, I was an active participant in that discussion, and I just couldn't help but say something about it. I would rather that we, you know, pass this to expand the purview of this Park Rehabilitation Expendable Trust Fund, but some, find some other way of supplementing that fund in order to accomplish the purpose that Alderman Como is trying to, you know, remedy the situation at Sargent Avenue. So that's why I'm making that motion.
I think I had Alderman Como?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. So I appreciate my colleague from Ward 5's attention to detail on this, and I just wanted to mention that that is something that we knew about, about where the trust fund came from, the East Side Recreational Facilities Trust Fund. The fact is, in talking with Department of Public Works and Park and Rec, they did say, you know, we did know that's why that fund was created, but there's no longer any plan to build that facility because the land that they were going to develop into that recreational facility is now more apartments. So there's no, there is no plan to build that park, so the money is just going to sit there in perpetuity because there's no, there is no longer an active plan to use it for that purpose. So that's why we decided that in the spirit of what the fund was initially created for, it would make sense to use a portion of it to rehabilitate another park that, fact of the matter is, just a couple of blocks outside of the border of the fund as it was created, it's just on the other side of Main Street, so it wouldn't be eligible to be used unless we either changed the definition of the East Side Fund or moved it into the Park Rehabilitation Fund. And even with doing this, still leaves over a half a million dollars. And even with doing this, still leaves over a half a million dollars in the East Side Recreational Facilities Trust Fund, should there be an opportunity in the future to do something with it. There's still a significant sum of money in that fund that we could use in the future and accomplish what we want to do at Sergeant Ave right now.
Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. And with deep respect to Alderman Jettie, and I do appreciate his looking into this particular matter. But I have to agree with Alderman Como. And I am not going to support this because back into the original deal when we looked at this, I want you to remember Sanders Street, when you mentioned Sanders Street, what was on Sanders Street? Back when I was on the Fire Department, that was John Mansfield. And so when the sheets were manufactured and broken, they didn't really go a heck of a lot of places. Excuse me. Unfortunately, they're all around the city because it was cheap fill that was offered. And when you deal with asbestos, the best thing that you do is to keep it encapsulated. And then to put a playground or some form of athletic field on something that the kids are going to be kicking the dirt and stuff like that, I would, I would have to guarantee there was significant, and what I mean, significant amount of encapsulation so that asbestos did not become airborne again and then could affect our children. But then came the idea for the apartment complex. And they guaranteed us, and it seemed like it was going to work out good, and they did a lot of the encapsulation. So therefore, I cannot support this at this time. I appreciate Alderman Jettie is well intentioned. I understand the lateness of this because he's on vacation. I do enjoy my vacations too. But like I say, there's a bigger picture with this, this particular property. Thank you.
Alderman Lopez.
So I was in an Infrastructure Committee meeting chaired by my colleague that was being referenced. And there is, there was an issue of asbestos being located in the original Riverfront location. And they had decided to encapsulate it and add buildings onto it where the original plan suggested there would be a soccer field. So removing that soccer field did not go over well with the soccer community particularly well. And there was some community pushback for, against that. And we were assured that there would be a park or a plan or something for all the people that were adding to that area. Because I think we do need to be very cautious of not only gentrification in terms of like, let's move in and take over areas for intercity neighborhoods and denser neighborhoods, but also let's take the resources out of it that they're supposed to get. I don't know that I would agree with the accuracy of the assessment that Sergeant Ave is just on the other side of Main Street. It's also over the river. So I don't really see people in those particular neighborhoods going all the way up to the river, crossing it, and then going to Sergeant Ave. And the intention there was, we're putting more families and neighbors into an area that doesn't have any kind of recreational facilities. They don't have the skate park. We move that to the other side of the city. And we are adding more and more buildings as were mentioned. So I do think we need to plan ahead. And we sort of, I at least checked that at least earlier this meeting, we were planning ahead. But I think between the bid to taking money out and then this additionally, we're doing a disservice to the neighbors in that area that I'm a little bit conscious of because we are doing a lot of developments. And we did go over this in the Infrastructure Committee meeting. And this was the compromise. After we discussed the encapsulation and adding more population density and all of that, and there were a couple of plans that were under, that were like contemplated. One of them was like in the middle of a trafficked area where roads would go around it and they could create an acre or so, something similar to what Park Social looks like. And then there were some other areas. And I don't know that there are no current plans means there shouldn't be any plans. I think it's maybe that we just had other priorities up to this point. If we on the Board of Aldermen never make this a priority, then fine, it's never going to be one. Seven, a million dollars goes down to 750, goes down to 500, goes down to less. And at those neighborhoods, you never get anything. But I think we should be mindful of our responsibilities to the people that are living in those areas as we invite them in. And this is something that should be taken seriously. So I will support both the original motion and the amendment. But I want it to be clear that my position is not to take money out of neighborhoods, even if they don't exist yet, even if they're still putting in more and more dense housing. I don't want to plan a neighborhood that doesn't have parks anywhere near it.
Alderman Clemmons.
Thank you, Madam President. I will not be supporting the motion to amend. You know, I said what I said at the budget meeting, and I meant it. The collaboration that was had between the four Aldermen and the Public Works Department, or the Parks Department, was, was the exact kind of thing that we should be doing more of in government. And more to the point, tonight, before this meeting, we had the Superintendent of Parks here discussing about essentially the fact that they are spread thin. If we added another park to, to their workload, they would have yet another burden, piece, burden to maintain. And that's essentially what it would be. I'm not saying at all that there shouldn't be a park over in that area or that we shouldn't be thinking about doing that. But I think that we need to first look at the fact that we have as many parks as we have. We have, as Alderman Karen had pointed out, there's been the same 18 people there since she's been the Director of the Superintendent of Parks. And that was how many years ago? So, and we've grown since then. We've added parks since then. So, you know, I'm sensitive to the things that were discussed in the sense that, you know, yes, I think that area deserves it. Yes, this was put aside for that. But I think we also need to look at our current needs. And there is a definite need that's been identified in this legislation. We don't have the money to go out and take it or add it to the budget. You know, we're trying to, in this hyperinflation times, we're trying to help people by not overburdening them in their taxes. That's why the mayor mentioned in his opening comments tonight about how trying to keep the tax rate down to, you know, 2%. So there's a lot of moving parts. And there's a lot of things that we have to consider as Aldermen. The homework was done on this one. And I'm going to support the original motion and not support the amendment.
Alderman Clay.
Thank you, Madam President. This is one of those, I am a sponsor of it. I was one of the four that had discussed it. This is one of those rock and a hard place kind of, of deals. That area, in my opinion, is economically disadvantaged. And it is difficult. And to Alderman Lopez's comments, yes, we took $250,000 out. Now we want to take 210,000. We, this would reduce it by almost half. Just the 210 is a 28% reduction from the 750 that's in there now. But to, to the points that Alderman Clemmons made, yes, a lot of work was put in through this. We do not want to overburden that. But I think at the same time, we also need to look that we do need something over in that area. We should not ignore that area. And I think that Alderman Lopez kind of brought that up. This is, was an area that was not my ward until redistricting. So part of that is my ward, part of it is Ward Seven. And it's an area that does need some attention. So I want to support this as is. But there are a lot of merits to striking the 210 and trying to find it elsewhere with, with funds somewhere else. So right now, I'm going to sit here and kind of think about how I want to handle this. Thank you.
Alderman Kelly.
If I could ask a question to the maker of the motion. I am taking everything in here. But my, my question is, you said that you would be leaving 750,000 in there, but it also says we're amending the scope. So is that 750,000 still set aside or is it now open to every park to use?
You have the answer to that, Alderman Como?
I do.
Okay.
I believe I do. So the, I think Alderman Jettie's motion would be to amend the scope of the Park Rehabilitation Fund, but then to leave the money in the East Side Recreational Facility Fund. So the East Side Recreational Facility Fund would still have the 750, but the Park Rehabilitation Fund would still have its scope amended so that it could be used for every park, but it just wouldn't be funded.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Alderman Tebow.
Thank you, Madam President. I said I was going to support this and I still, you know, what I said about Alderman Sullivan is still correct. But, you know, Alderman Lopez and Alderman Jettie made some great points. And, you know, it does need to be something recreational in that, in that area. So I'm, you know, like Alderman Clay was trying to think about which way she's going to go. I'm thinking that way too. And I think I'm going to, going to go the way of Alderman Lopez, where I will support the original motion, but I also am going to support the amendment.
Alderman Como.
Yes, thank you. Just one last thing I wanted to add. And I apologize that I didn't mention this when I first made the motion. But the reason we are doing this is because the facility at Sergeant Ave, the lighting system is unsafe. So Parks and Rec has identified this as, as a critical repair that they need to make. So that's why we took the steps that we did to get the funding for it so that we could do this pretty much as soon as possible before there's some sort of critical failure there or, you know, a pole comes down or something like that that we don't want to see. So while I do agree with previous speakers that, you know, I'd like to see parks in all areas of the city. And that area down by Riverfront is particularly underserved as far as parks go. And I'd be more than happy to have that discussion. But I'm looking at an immediate need right now. And so I'd be more than happy to, you know, look at ways we could refund that fund in the future. If there's, there's money coming in that we can set aside to replenish that fund, I'm more than happy to have that conversation. But I'm concerned with the immediate need at Sergeant Ave right now.
Alderman Lopez.
To the maker of the motion, as a point of clarification, yeah, that would have been good to know because I stand on my principle. But if something's going to fall on a kid, then I have some concerns. But to that end, is the amount that you're moving directly informed by a quote or an estimate for repairs or is that just a general, this is how much it would likely cost? Because I think we probably could still pass the amendment. We could still pass the motion. And we could revisit a transfer if there's a justification for it and a quote.
Alderman Como.
Yes, thank you. It's a great question. Parks and Rec did get a quote from the vendor. And that, the 210 is a, is an actual bid to do the project.
Alderman Kelly.
Thank you. So now that I understand a little bit more, I think that I am going to support the motion, I'm sorry, for amending. I think that the piece of this that is hard for me is that we're going to be taking from an economically disadvantaged area that was promised a park and putting it into an emergency situation, which we absolutely have to take care of. But I just don't like saying to these people who have continued to be get, put more and more people in their space that we're going to take the money out that was supposed to be for your park. So I'm going to support the motion.
Alderman Sullivan.
Thank you. I just want to speak to this. I can't support the motion to amend. I think that when we looked at this, that we, you know, in understanding that there is no plan in place, the priorities change as the city evolves. And without this coming up, what, you know, there was no plan in place. The money is there. Would there have been a plan in place? Don't know, chicken or the egg? We have a need that's right there in front of us right now to fix a park. While we also heard that Parks and Rec was, you know, lacking staff, they're also lacking funds. And here's an opportunity to carve out some of that money, put it to an immediate need that we will see immediately for an upgrade of our parks. So I would, I'm not going to support the motion to amend and obviously support the resolution as is. Thanks.
You're welcome. Alderman Jettie.
Thank you. So if, could I ask through you to Alderman Como, the, the Park Rehabilitation Escrow Fund, 7058, how much money is in there now?
Alderman Como.
The last time I looked, it was somewhere around like $80,000. But they also use that fund for a lot of different things. So it could have changed since the last time I looked.
And...
Alderman Jettie.
Yeah. And so the, the resolution itself, you know, does not specify the Sergeant Avenue situation. It's talking about transferring this money into the Park Rehabilitation Fund. And then I'm assuming a decision by someone else at some other point is going to be to use that money for, for the Sergeant Avenue. We're, we're not voting tonight to do the Sergeant Avenue project.
If I may, Madam President, the resolution specifically says for the purpose of making infrastructure repairs to the Sergeant Ave area, the park area. That's the, that's in the resolution. That's the specific purpose of the legislation is to fund that one project.
Oh, it does? Okay. So I missed that. I apologize.
No problem.
So the, you know, I would like to point out that there are other sources of funds. I mean, we're, you know, we're, the mayor is going to be proposing, you know, use of escrows. You know, so there is the possibility that the mayor and his financial team could come up, you know, with a source of this fund. But to take this money from the East Side Recreational Facilities Fund, you know, I, I just think is, you know, it kind of betrays the, you know, the commitment we, commitment we made to that neighborhood. And that's why I'm not against your proposal. I'm not, I'm not arguing against anything you want to do. I just don't want you to take it away from, from this fund. And the fact that there, you know, as Alderman Lopez said, I think, the fact that there's no plan in place, you know, doesn't mean that they cannot, I mean, you know, these plans evolve very slowly. And, you know, the Community Development Department is, is looking at that neighborhood. I mean, we've got that whole, you know, Transportation District that we're trying to rehabilitate, you know. And I just envision that somewhere in there, we would be able to find, you know, some plot of land that we could be used for this purpose. And then we're going to have the money to buy it if it comes up. So that's, that's why this money was reserved into this trust fund. And that's why I'm against taking it out. Thank you.
I'm going to recognize Attorney Bolton.
Yeah, as, as I understand the motion, the motion was to delete some wording in the body of the resolution so that it would not provide for the transfer and not provide for the rehabilitation or repairs at the Sergeant Avenue facility. But it was only, to my understanding, amending the body of the resolution. The title is what ends up getting printed in the minutes, gets into, on the city's website and memorialized when people are looking. And if the title still refers to the transfer and still refers to Sergeant Avenue, it's going to be confusing for someone in the future. So if the intention is to take out the transfer of funds and to take out the repairs to Sergeant Avenue, I suggest the amendment be made not only to the body of the resolution, but also to the title.
Could I, could I respond?
Alderman Jettie.
Yeah, thank you very much for, for pointing that out. And, you know, as I quickly, you know, read this again, hearing what you're saying, I think the reference to the purpose of making infrastructure repairs to the Sergeant Avenue Park Area is... Ave Park area is, is in the title only. It's not in the, the body of the resolution. So contrary, I don't know if Alderman Camo would agree with this, but it seems like the body of the resolution doesn't contain that language, making infrastructure repairs to the Sergeant Ave Park area. It's only in the title. And the title doesn't, as I understand the law, the title doesn't do anything except mislead people.
But my suggestion was to try and avoid the misleading nature.
So, so if I could amend my motion to clarify that, so besides striking the last paragraph, you know, I would strike... So I would also strike the title, beginning, the second line of the title, beginning with the article "and" or the conjunction "and" and the remainder. So the title would be changed to "amending the scope of the Park Rehabilitation Expendable Trust Fund" and would eliminate, would strike "in transferring funds into the Park Rehabilitation Expendable Trust Fund from the East Side Recreational Facilities Expendable Trust Fund for the purpose of making infrastructure repairs to the Sergeant Ave Park Area." And if, Madam President, through you to Attorney Bolton, would that, would that clarify?
I think that clarifies it, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Camo and then Alderman Clemens.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I, I would suggest that we dispose of the motion to amend first, but then if we do that and that motion were to fail and we're back to the original resolution, if it would make my colleague from Ward 5 feel better, I would be more than happy to amend, add language to the body defining the scope, but I, I guess I kinda trusted that Parks and Rec was gonna spend the money on what we said we were gonna spend it on and, and that the legal department wrote the legislation in, in the way that it was gonna accomplish what we were trying to accomplish and I, I felt that we did. So I, I don't really feel that it's necessary, but if we get to that point, I'm, I'm not opposed to that, but that's a discussion we can have after we dispose of the motion to amend.
Okay. Sorry, I, I missed Alderman Govea, so I'm gonna call on him next.
Thank you, Madam President. I'll be quick here. I will not be supporting the motion currently. I feel the timing of the presentation we got in the special board of Alderman meeting before this one, it was kinda telling when we're hearing about understaffing, we're hearing about how it's hard for them to maintain everything they have now. And this fund's established to try to make even more work for them, as Alderman Clemens said earlier. At this time, I feel that we should be taking money from other areas that's already in-house before we go to the taxpayers looking for more. This is, this is a pretty simple piece of legislation in my mind. We're using it for relatively the same purpose, as far as playgrounds and the outdoors go and recreation. This will help fix a need that Parks and Rec has without going through the budget process, which I think a lot of us want to avoid of adding that into the budget process. I think this is a creative way of doing it and I plan on supporting it as originally written. Thank you.
Alderman Clemens.
Yeah, I, I would just request a roll call on the amendment.
Okay. Alderman Cle.
Thank you. Madam President, again, still not quite sure yet. I appreciate the, the discretion of that we could refund the account at a later date. The truth is that that may never happen because it'll be something that'll be put aside. And while I hate to put a fellow colleague on the hot seat, I am going to look to my colleague in Ward 7 as this at one point was her ward, but it will also affect her ward probably even more than, than mine as the portion that I have taken over. Do you foresee anything in the near future? You have a Park and Rec behind you, so...
Alderman Karen.
Thank you. In listening to all the conversation and when we discussed taking this funding out, I wasn't that concerned. My concern was if we can take care of repairing something that we already have in existence, that's fine. I know, I sat on the committee, Director Cummings was there when we were talking about what we were gonna do with the Hudson Bridge. And one of the projects was making a playground, a recreational area within, within that redesign of the street, which the state changed. But we don't have a lot of land within that area. I mean, we have the Bridge Street Playground, which has been there a long time. Then you move up to Dr. Chris with the fields and what have you, but you don't have a lot of space that belongs to the city that you can really utilize for fields and what have you. So knowing that we have a lot of facilities, some of them aren't used like they used to be back 20, 25 years ago because times have changed. So I think it's important that we have this $700,000. If we can use part of it and we do know that we have a contract that we could get this done within that amount of money, that's fine. And then look, maybe next year, look at what you wanna do with the other $500,000. Do you wanna put it back and hold it and see what comes through? But I don't think that you're doing a bad thing, but it also gives you pause to think about the future. But that area, I'm concerned because with the asphalt plant wanting to go in there and the development that they wanted to put in that area at the old shoe shop, who's gonna wanna live there if there's a asphalt plant? So you have to take all of these things into consideration and if that money's been sitting there for a long time, you should now think about how you're going to spend that money in the right way, not foolishly, but in the right way. And when I hear that there's problems with electrical poles, things like that, that should be a top priority for, for the city because you wanna make sure that people who are using a facility are safe. So I have no problems with it, but I don't think you should turn around and say, okay, we did this, now we can use more money. You have to stop and then reevaluate. But at this point, I don't see us putting any recreation facility within that area and, and that's unfortunate.
Mayor. Alderman Cle.
Thank you. I, I'm gonna be quick here. Thank you, Alderman Karen. That, that really did help me make my decision. I am not going to support the amendment in go as it was and ask Alderman Camo to add the Sergeant Ave into that particular further resolve, so thank you.
Alderman Clemens, did I get to you?
Yeah.
Okay. Alderman Kelly.
I'm going to go the opposite of my colleague who just spoke and I'm digging my heels a little bit more here because I think, I want the maker of the motion and everybody who worked on this to understand that I think that the work that was done was great. However, this is about environmental justice. We're, we've talked about putting a asphalt plant in that area. We're putting in more and more housing, many of which is affordable and disadvantaged. And that fund has been sitting there without a park and that's on us, but to go and take that money and put it into a totally different area of the city that doesn't have that same makeup and doesn't have the same need for a park is, is a justice and equity issue. And I'm, I'm, I'm getting passionate about it because I feel like it's really important that we think about that. If we were going to propose taking money out of the Greeley Park and put it in this, we would be hearing from those people every single day from your ward, lovely people, but we would be hearing from them. And that's because they have the means and opportunity to come here and talk to us about that and tell us why it's frustrating for them. The people that live in this area don't have that same opportunity, so this is about equity.
Alderman Dowd and then Alderman Karen.
Yeah, I was gonna try and avoid commenting on this, but as Chair of Budget, I think, need to step in and say that just because we're taking this money out to fix an immediate problem doesn't mean that we couldn't add the money back into that account later. We're gonna have to find the money to do the repairs at Sergeant Ave anyway, so if we don't do it now and take it from this account, we're gonna have to find it someplace else. And if we do, that money could go back into this account if the boards wanted to do that. And it may also take a year or two or three before we ever find a piece of property, so we have plenty of time to replenish this account. If we wanna get the Sergeant Ave Critical Repair done now, this is the expedient way to do it. If we wanna find the money to re, that it would've taken to do the Sergeant Ave somewhere else, we can put that into this account later after we get it fixed. It's not that complex. It's not like we're abandoning them. We don't have any place to put the park right now and it could take years. So we're gonna have the money sitting there when we can get a critical repair done right now? Doesn't make sense. So I'm not supporting the amendment.
Alderman Karen.
Not, not to get into a fight, but as Alderman Dowd said, we don't have a place to put this and we took out a skateboard park to accommodate for the development of that facility. There were young kids that were not happy about it, but in the long run, they love where it is now because it's part of a whole complex. We're not, I, I can't say we're doing a disservice because I have lived in that area all my life, so we, if we don't have the space for it and it's gonna take us a long time to try to figure it out, then if we have this money, as Alderman Dowd said, and we need, have a need, we should be taking care of it now and then put a hold, then say you can't spend any more of this money and if you can replace that money, that's fine. But you've gotta look at what you have now. And we talk about this all the time. We don't take care of our infrastructure that we have. We're always looking to build or add, but if we don't take care of what we have, what is the point of adding to it? That, that would be my easiest explanation for it. And I understand your, your under passion. I know we had a hard time though at Greeley Park when we were trying to replace equipment there because people didn't want the new playground. They fought this tooth and nail, so, you know, so you can look at, you know, I've dealt with that for 40, over 40 years, so, you know, you have to, you have to take the time to look at it and make the best decision at this point in time that will benefit everyone. And, and I think this is, and when Alderman Camo came to see me, I said, yes, let's, let's do this. If we have it, let's do it. So, and if, I, I can't change anyone's mind, you have to make up your mind based on what you feel and not how I'm, how I feel about what, what's transpired. Thank you.
Alderman Cle and then Alderman Clemens.
Thank you. I, I, I respect my colleague's passion, but to say that the people in the neighborhood, that is also Ward 3. But to say that they would fight tooth and nail to stop you from taking money from Greeley Park is a mischaracterize, mischaracterization of the residents there and I, I do take umbrage on it. But putting that aside, I, I do believe, as was spoken, we don't have a place right now, but we do have a need. I also mentioned that I don't truly believe that we would refund the account. I think it's a lost, it, it's a lost. I, I would love to say that we're going to take escrow accounts and put it back in there or we're gonna do this and so on, but I know how things go, we'll find another need for it. So I do respect you, your, your comment on that. I think you are spot on. I, I don't disagree with you. But keeping that money in that account while we don't have any city property, which means we have to go and buy city property, we have to acquire it and that's probably gonna cost even more. And I would assume at that point when we acquire, acquire it, then we will fund it and we will fund it appropriately. I, I hate when we build housing and we don't do this. I, I have a constituent who has come to me and continues to say to me, we need more parks, we need more parks. And they're absolutely right, but at the same time, Park and Recs is saying, we can't handle any more parks, we can't do this. I am blessed, when you look at the park list, I am blessed and Ward 3 do have a lot of parks. We have Atherton, but we also have the Salem Street Tot Lot and we have the Shattuck Street Tot Lot, which is in French Hill. Both of those are in French, in the French Hill area, so it's not just, Greeley Park is not all that Ward 3 has. And Atherton is also in, in that area as well. So we have parks within the, the more economically diverse area, et cetera, but that area does need a park. I, I will not disagree with that and as, now that I share a part of that property with Ward 7, I would love to find it, but I think we would need to find land. And I would hope that at that point when we're acquiring the land, we would also want to fund that. So maybe a pipe dream, but I, I think we need to look at the immediate need. So thank you, Madam President.
Alderman Moran.
Yes, I'd like to move the question.
Thank you.
The motion is to move the question.
Unanimous.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
That motion carries. So we need to vote on the amendment.
Roll call.
I roll call.
Alderman O'Brien.
No.
Alderman Sullivan.
No.
Alderman Cle.
No.
Alderman Moran.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Clemens.
No.
Alderman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Camo.
No.
Alderman Dowd.
No.
Alderman Govea.
No.
Alderman Karen.
No.
Alderman Tebow.
Yes.
Alderman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
No.
Six ayes, zero nays, uh, nine nays.
And that motion fails.
Six ayes? Okay.
So the motion before us is the original motion. Alderman Camo.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion to amend the resolution by adding to the second paragraph at the end of the last sentence, "for the purposes of funding infrastructure repairs in the Sergeant Ave Park Area."
Okay, you've heard the motion discussion on that motion. Alderman Dowd.
Question with Corporation Council, that doesn't need a roll call, right? That just needs a yes, no?
Correct.
Thank you.
Further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. So the motion before us is for final passage as amended. I roll call. Discussion. Thank you. For the clerk, all the rolls.
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderman Moran.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
No.
Alderman Clemens.
Yes.
Alderman Kelly.
No.
Alderman Camo.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Govea.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Tebow.
Yes.
Alderman Timmons.
No.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
Twelve ayes, three nays.
That motion carries. Resolution 23149 is de- Resolution twenty-three one forty-nine is declared duly adopted as amended.
Second reading of R dash twenty-three dash one fifty, approving an amendment to PCS site agreement with SBA twenty-twelve TS Assets LLC for the Cell Tower Site located at Seventy Bridge Street.
Alderman Clemmons.
I would move for final passage of R twenty-three one fifty.
Motion is for final passage. Discussion on that motion. Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
That motion carries, and Resolution twenty-three one fifty is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of R dash twenty-three dash one fifty-one, approving the cost items of a collective bargaining agreement between the mayor and the Board of Fire Commissioners of the City of Nashua, New Hampshire, and Local Number seven eighty-nine International Association of the Firefighters from July first, twenty twenty-three, through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-seven.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion for final passage of R twenty-three one fifty-one. I'd like to speak to it briefly.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes, this passed the Budget Committee unanimously. We had a great presentation from the Nashua Fire Rescue and Chief Buxton, and it's a very reasonable contract for the city, has a lot of positive things in it, and I think that the members of the Nashua Fire Rescue that do such a great job protecting the city deserve our consideration in passing this contract.
Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. Due to the... What is transcribed in the city charter, with my son as a lieutenant on Nashua Fire Rescue, I'm unable to vote on this particular contract. The downside with that little thing that's in the charter, if we were buying a pig and a polk, I couldn't speak on it. But I happen to feel exactly the way Alderman Dowd does, that this is a very good agreement. I compliment the mayor, the Board of Fire Commissioners, the fire chief, all those that worked on it, and as well as Local seven eighty-nine. It's definitely good for the citizens of Nashua. Thank you, Madam President.
Alderman Gueva.
Thank you, Madam President. After consulting with the legal department, I also have to abstain from my vote due to my employment with the Professional Firefighters of New Hampshire, a state organization of Local seven eighty-nine. Thank you.
Alderman Sullivan.
Thank you, Madam President. As Alderman Dowd said, this passed unanimously in budget. It was a pretty quick budget meeting. And I thought it apropos that we're passing this on the anniversary of nine eleven, first responders and everything that they've done for us, and they are a true asset to this city. A funny story, the other night, Monday night, I was reviewing the agenda, and when it was raining outside and Northeastern Boulevard was underwater, fire trucks never go down my street. A fire truck went up and down my street about six times, reminding me that this contract was coming up for review. So I thought it was funny that I said, yes, I'm gonna obviously support it, and, you know, they just wanted to remind me that it was on the agenda this week. So I just wanted to say, I'm excited about it. I've spoken to a few firemen, they're excited about it, and all the different features that are in it. So great contract.
Alderman Tebow.
Thank you, Madam President. You know, Alderman Sullivan took the words right out of my mouth. It is apropos that it's the week of September eleventh, and, you know, I would put our fire stations and fire department up against anyone. I think they do a great job. Love the contract, I'm excited as well. I think it's something that, you know, we can move on after this, they sign the contract, we can start to talk about infrastructure, because that's what the fire right now needs. They need a new floor in Amherst Street, we need a new fire station in the west of the city. So I'm hoping that we can start working on some of that stuff going forward, and I'm wholeheartedly supporting this contract, so thank you.
Alderman Lopez.
Yeah, I just want to say, unfortunately, I live on a street where the fire department is constantly driving by, but that just underscores the need for our staff and the quality of personnel that we have. So I think if the chief is coming forward and saying people are already interested in our fire department because of the things we're doing, then he and the mayor and the people involved in this have found another innovative way to make sure our staffing levels are up, our services are performing at their highest level, you know, capable. And this sounds like it's really a well thought out proposal. And we don't often see the union membership coming forward and saying, this is a great idea, don't mess with it. So when they do, I listen.
Alderman Como, and then Alderman Clemmons.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I'm also gonna support this. I am a diagonal abutter of the Lake Street Fire Station, so I think I hear the sirens almost as often as Alderman Lopez does. I just would like to ask, I had requested that I be named as a sponsor, and I don't see my names. If you could add that on, that'd be great. But I will support this. Thank you.
Alderman Clemmons.
Thank you, Madam President. Briefly, you know, again, as everyone has said, this is a great contract. I look forward to supporting it, and I'm always thankful to our firefighters in Nashua. They saved my friends' property, among, I'm sure, many others, but that personal connection is important to me, and I just want to thank them for everything that they do.
Alderman Moran.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to say, of course, I will wholeheartedly support this contract, and it's a win-win for the city and the frontline firefighters, our most trusted civil profession. And I'm glad to see that they're getting what they need in support, and I look forward to the infrastructure talks as well, because they need great facilities to work out of on top of being great professionals.
Anyone else? I, too, think this is a great contract. I think they got innovative and creative, and it's a win, so thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Resolution twenty-three one fifty-one is declared duly adopted. Unfinished business ordinances.
Second reading of O dash...
Point of order, Madam President. Do you need to record that both Alderman Gueva and myself did abstain?
Yes.
Yeah, we'll record it.
Thank you. We'll record it. Thank you.
Second reading of O dash twenty-three dash zero five seven, updating the ordinance regarding the Performing Arts Center Board of Trustees.
Alderman Tebow.
I'd like to make a motion for final passage of O dash twenty-three dash zero fifty-seven, and talk briefly on it.
Alderman Tebow.
Thank you. So this just basically changed the name of Performing Arts Center to the Nashua Center for the Arts, which is what, you know, we had, I guess, I don't know if it was a contest, or the person that gave the money to us wanted to name it that. And also, it changes the meeting date of the Board of Trustees for Performing Arts Center. So, pretty simple.
You've heard the motion discussion. Alderman Clay.
Thank you. To add to what Alderman Tebow had mentioned was that there was a one million dollar grant for the naming of the Nashua Center for the Arts, and this is keeping with this. It changes all the references to the Performing Arts Center to the Nashua Center for the Arts. And in the previous, we had stated that we would... We had to have an annual meeting, and that we put it with the first Monday in February. And the truth of the matter is, when we do have our meetings, we do it as the second Friday of the second month within the quarter. So this is just keeping with, we don't have to create an extra meeting or change things from the way it is. It just makes that a little bit easier. So the Board of Trustees is just looking to have this changed, so thank you.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, and ordinance twenty-three fifty-seven is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of O dash twenty-three dash zero five eight, authorizing a stop sign on Mark Street at its intersection with Dudley Street.
Alderman Karen.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion for final passage of zero dash twenty-three dash zero five eight.
You've heard the motion. Is there discussion on that motion? Alderman Moran.
This is a great idea to put a stop sign on Mark Street. I know several people that live over there, and I'm glad that Alderwoman Karen brought this forward, because it'd be a great addition to that neighborhood.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, and ordinance twenty-three fifty-eight is declared duly adopted. New business resolutions.
First reading of R dash twenty-three dash one fifty-two, establishing the use of fund balance for tax rate.
Additional sponsors. Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Clay, Alderman Moran, Alderman Lopez, Alderwoman Kelly, Alderman Como, Alderman Dowd, Alderman Gueva, Alderman Karen, Alderman Tebow, and myself. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Budget Review Committee.
First reading of R dash twenty-three dash one five three, relative to the acceptance of four hundred and twenty-five thousand from the New Hampshire Department of Safety Homeland Security Grant Program.
Additional sponsors. Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Sullivan, Alderman Clay, Alderman Moran, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Como, Alderman Dowd, Alderman Gueva, Alderwoman Karen, Alderman Tebow, Alderman Timmons, and myself. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Human Affairs Committee.
First reading of R dash twenty-three dash one five four, relative to the supplemental appropriation of four hundred and twenty-five thousand of fiscal year twenty twenty-three, assigned fund balance into the Department one twenty-eight Risk Management Account eight nine six five zero, transferred to Property and Casualty Self-Insurance Fund.
Additional sponsors. Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Clay, Alderman Dowd. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Budget Review Committee and schedule a special Board of Alderman meeting, public hearing on Monday, September twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three, seven P M.
First reading of R dash twenty-three dash one fifty-five, relative to the acceptance of four hundred and fifty thousand from the State of New Hampshire Department of Business and Economic Affairs Invest New Hampshire Municipal Per Unit Grant Program, and approval for the city to grant said funds to neighborworks of Southern New Hampshire for the apartments at two forty-nine Main Street.
Additional sponsors. Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Sullivan, Alderman Clay, Alderman Moran, Alderman Lopez, Alderwoman Kelly, Alderman Como, Alderman Dowd, Alderman Karen, Alderman Tebow, Alderwoman Timmons, and myself. Alderman O'Brien, you have a motion?
Yes, I do, Madam President. I would like to make a motion that the readings be suspended to allow for a second reading of R dash twenty-three dash one fifty-five.
You've heard the motion. Is there discussion on that motion?
This is rules being suspended, and if there's no objection, you can just do it.
Okay. Okay. So I just need to take a vote.
Unless there's...
There's no objection.
Unless we suspend the rules.
Okay.
Have a second reading.
Mr. Clark, we have a second reading.
Okay. Second reading of R dash twenty-three dash one fifty-five, relative to the acceptance of four hundred and fifty thousand from the State of New Hampshire Department of Business and Economic Affairs Invest New Hampshire Municipal Per Unit Grant Program, and approval for the city to grant said funds to neighborworks of Southern New Hampshire for the apartments at two forty-nine Main Street.
Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to make a motion for final passage of R dash twenty-three one fifty-five, and may I speak briefly?
Yes.
Okay. Madam President, as you remember, this is exactly what Director Sullivan brought to our attention during the public comment, so if you support it, as I do, I'm looking for your votes. Thank you, Madam President.
You're welcome. Further discussion? Alderman Lopez.
In the public comment that Director Sullivan made, he also acknowledged that as Chair of the Human Affairs Committee, typically it's considered a nicety to let me know if there's gonna be a second reading, and he was concerned about whether I would support it. There is no need for concern, because also, as Alderman of Ward Four, I'm very familiar with neighborworks, the work that they've been doing in the community. We are looking forward to two forty Main Street and the increased availability of housing that neighborworks brings, particularly to low-income and differently-abled people. It's very much needed, and it's a very good location in need of rehabilitation. So as Human Affairs Committee Chair and anyone on the Human Affairs Committee is aware, sometimes funding comes in really fast, but this is money that comes in to do a project that is very, very important to the city, that the taxpayers are not paying for. They're actually getting their money back because they paid for it at the federal level, and anything that the City of Nashua can do to get that money flowing back into the hands of organizations trying to do development to help our citizens is a good thing.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries.
First reading of R dash twenty-three dash one fifty-six, amending the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development Consolidated Plan for Fiscal Years twenty twenty-one through twenty twenty-five to amend round for CDBG-CV funding under the Twenty Twenty CARES Act.
Additional sponsors. Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Clay, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Karen, Alderman Tebow, Alderman Timmons. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Human Affairs Committee.
First...
Oh, new business ordinances.
First reading of O dash twenty-three dash zero five nine, amending the Land Use Code Notice Provisions Table in the Historic District Commission Review Procedure.
Additional sponsors. Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Sullivan, Alderman Clay, Alderman Tebow. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Planning and Economic Development Committee and the Planning Board, and schedule an Aldermanic Planning and Economic Development Committee public hearing on Tuesday, October seventeenth, twenty twenty-three, at seven P M. Period for general public comment. One person that signed up, Lori Ordolano.
Lori Ordolano, forty-one Berkeley Street. I noticed on August eighth that you folks approved the provision to change the bylaws for the two oh one corporations to make them RSA ninety-one A compliant. I'm a little bit concerned that what you approved is not RSA ninety-one A compliant, and that the posting of the minutes doesn't have to be done for two weeks. And I really don't understand why that is, because I've worked hard to try and make them compliant. But when I read Attorney Bolton's statements that the whole reason this is being done is just because it's easy enough to do, you know, we'll just take care of what she wants, I have to wonder why I had to file a lawsuit to do this. Because for ten months before filing the lawsuit, I was asking the city and the Board of Directors why the bylaws were wrong, why the two oh one corps weren't public, and no one would respond to me. So you forced my hand to provide a lawsuit, then the two oh one corps have to lawyer up. You're gonna pay McLean Middleton a couple hundred grand to represent this, and you gave me a win right off the bat, because they called right away and said, hey, we agree with you, they're wrong. So I'm really concerned with how Attorney Bolton portrayed this to the board, that it's just, it's easy to do. Why didn't you take care of it when it wouldn't cost the taxpayers a couple hundred grand? And of course, the whole purpose of this was for me to get access to information that is from the inception of those companies. Attorney Bolton mentioned that that's not the deal. That's not the deal I had with McLean Middleton. I was unaware that he believes, Attorney Bolton, that this is all gonna come after. So it really surprises me. I'm disappointed you approved those. As you all know, I have filed a disciplinary complaint against Attorney Bolton with the Attorney Discipline Office, and it's now up before the disciplinary council. And I am very proud of my work to get those complaints there, those two complaints, because citizens have such a difficult time moving them. Attorney Bolton seems to think he's entitled to some form of confidentiality. I think he waived that when my treatment in this chamber was anything but protected of my rights. I heard Attorney Bolton call me out as somebody who doesn't tell the truth, a liar, somebody who omits information. I've been called out as a child predator, somebody who does oppositional research. Ms. Clay is somebody who incites violence. I've heard it all. Ms. Kleiner coming in and saying I was a criminal. You know, I've had my reputation trampled on here, and the last thing I'm gonna afford Attorney Bolton is confidentiality on an attorney discipline complaint. That can result in a six-month license suspension. I think it should hit him hard. I think he's been a terrible municipal attorney for this city. The property casualty account has gone up from a half a million dollars when he started here to upwards of seven million dollars, and that's where we're tucking all of his lawsuits. Because this guy likes a fight, and he doesn't settle. Thank you.
Remarks by members of the board, I'll start over here tonight.
Thank you, Madam President. And I'd like to speak to the comment from the last speaker. First of all, I think that particular speaker has caused our city not our lawyers millions of dollars. In fact, she cost us two million dollars in lawsuits. She's gonna continue to cost this city and the taxpayers. No. We paying this particular speaker... No, we paying this particular speaker millions of dollars, and she keep following right to nose, she keeps coming in here every board meeting, speaking out of turn, and she is the one that's costing us millions of dollars. And the taxpayers should know that's is costing us the money, not Steve Bolton. And I'm really appalled by what she said about him. If she wouldn't come in here and make accusations, maybe that wouldn't happen. And I don't regret saying what I'm saying because it's the truth. The truth is, she cost us $2 million, and the taxpayers should know that's what she's doing.
Alderman Tebow.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Madam President. Yeah, I mean, I'm going to obviously support Alderman Timmons's comments. And, you know, I think Attorney Bolton did a great job. And he's been maligned, and costing the city $2 million to try to sue us is just crazy. I think it's personal stuff more than it is city stuff. But the last thing I want to say, I just want to say thank you to everyone that reached out to me while I was having surgery. I will tell you, and some of you have had it, vertebrae surgery is no joke. I thought I was going to be back to work the next day. Yeah, no way. And I think the mental aspect of it was worse than the physical aspect. But thank you for all the wishes, and I got to thank my family because I'll tell you right now, you go on a steroid, my mood swings are all over the place. You guys know how my mood is when I'm not on pregizone. So it was quite the experience for my family. So my wife and daughter, who had to take care of me during that time, thank you very much, and it's great to be back and performing the jobs I need to do. So thank you.
Alderman Karen.
Yes, thank you. First of all, thank you very much for all of you who came to the 20th. Nashville Goes Back to School, it was a great day. We had over 1,500 people there. We had, the Nashville Lions Club did over 60 eye exams and sent people to various eye doctors to have re-exams because they found some problems. But everyone seemed to have had a good time, and I appreciate, Mayor, that we got the proclamation done because we forgot it on that day. But it turned out to be a better day to do it here, and thank you for that. The other thing is, tomorrow at the Nashville Senior Center at 5:00, we'll be celebrating their 45th anniversary. So we hope that most of you, Aldermen, if you're able to, to come down and participate. The mayor will be there to do a proclamation for them. And we will also be receiving a proclamation from the governor this year. And yes, I've seen that program start from day one on Main Street. So 45 years has gone by, and we look forward to you coming and visiting the Senior Center tomorrow. Thank you.
Alderman Govea.
Thank you, Madam President. Last weekend, it was great to swing by the multicultural festival as well as the farmer's market. Thought they were both fantastic events. Stuffed up on some vegetables as well, so can't go wrong with that. And then we have some busy stuff going on, a more of one coming up. We have Wheels and Wings next Saturday on the 23rd from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at the Nashville Airport. Fantastic event for anybody who hasn't gone, love it every year. And the following weekend is Apple Festival at Sullivan Farms. So a lot going on. Thank you.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes, I just want to hear, I heard that the election went very well despite the weather, and that the shift to Ward 5 voting at the high school went very well, and everybody seems to have liked it. Having the construction going on at Main Dunstable School for the next couple of years, the voting will be at the high school for the foreseeable future. So I'm glad it all went well. And I was out of town for the election. I did vote absentee before I left because my son-in-law's father passed away. So I've been in New York for a few days.
Alderman Camo.
Yes, thank you. I'm only going to talk for about 25 to 30 minutes. I also wanted to, I wanted to thank Alderman Timmons for the invitation to the multicultural festival. That was a great event. I actually didn't realize that the bottom floor of the library was so big. I think I got lost a couple of times. There was a lot of, a lot of great information and booths set up there. It was just a really good time, so I wanted to thank her for the invitation. I wanted to thank everybody tonight for the spirited parks discussion. I'm always up for a good parks discussion. I just wanted to maybe put out there that, you know, a couple of times I heard, you know, we keep building these housings, apartment buildings, and bringing in, you know, more family and more population. Maybe it would behoove the city to look at a modified long-term plan where instead of trying to cram as many units of housing into every piece of developable land that we have, when we're talking about those plans, we talk about ways to put parks in as well so that we're not filling, you know, every element with highest and best use and most, you know, apartment units that we can. And we talk about other ways to do that as well. And I also heard, you know, a couple of times we talked about if we use that money tonight, you know, we can put it back later. And then, you know, there were comments that, well, that's never going to get done. There's 15 of us here that can write legislation anytime we want to. So, I mean, I could come in tomorrow and write the legislation to put the money back into that fund. So there's not, nothing stopping anybody from doing it. The fact is, you know, that money sat there for four years, and we talked about, well, just because there isn't a plan now doesn't mean there can't be. But again, there's nothing stopping anybody from doing one. So I'm always up for a good parks discussion. If anybody wants to involve me on what we can do to increase recreational facilities in Ward 7, I'd be more than happy to help. I love parks, and I want as many of them as we can get. Thank you.
Alderman Kelly.
I'm going to keep it short, but I think that we missed out on giving applause to Alderman Karen and the 20th anniversary of the work she's been doing. So I'd like to have.
Alderman Clemmons.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to respond to the remarks that were made from the public a few minutes ago. I've known Attorney Bolton for a very long time. He's a very honest gentleman, he's a straight shooter, and when the word unethical does not cross. So, you know, I think it's important that we support our city employees. I think it's important that we tell the truth, more importantly. And the truth is, is that we have a fine city attorney.
Alderman Jettie.
Thank you. So I want to, you know, thank you for tolerating my last-minute discussion about the transferring the money from the escrow fund. Yeah, I apologize for having been on vacation, but I was happier being there. And I'm not so sure I'm happy being back. But here I am. So, and I wanted, yesterday I wanted to acknowledge the workers at the polls. I was one of them, I was a ballot inspector yesterday. And I want to remind, you know, people that they work very hard. And we set up, we spent a couple of hours setting up the night before. And then Tuesday, we arrived at 5:00 a.m. and left at 9:00 p.m. So it was a long day. I wish more people had come out. And, you know, regarding the change of the poll location for Ward 5 to the Nashville High School South, it's a much, you know, a much larger facility. So the, we were in the, there were two gyms there, I think there were two. I saw two, there were three. We were in one of them. And it's much larger than the gym at Main Dunstable. So the election workers really liked it. They thought the facility was, you know, much, much better. And, you know, the only complaint we had were, you know, people having trouble finding it. Describing the poll location as Nashville High School South doesn't really help people find where the poll location actually is because it's a large school. So hopefully in the future, the city clerk will identify it as Nashville High School South Gymnasium because, you know, that's a better, a more accurate location. And there's, people had trouble when they drive in, you know, where do they go? And we didn't have adequate signage to direct people to the place. And there is signage that directs people to the gymnasium, so it would be helpful to connect the two. But I'm sure you, I heard that you promised to rectify that as much as possible for November. So speaking, and I wanted to, you know, tell people that, you know, people who are interested in government and want to get involved but just don't have the time or the inclination to run for public office, there are, you know, many positions available as moderator, selectman. Moderator and selectmen are elected, but then there are ballot clerks. Every ward has a bunch of ballot clerks that are, you know, that are, you know, they're paid, not much, but they're paid. But they, you know, it's just a one-day commitment. So it's an opportunity to get involved in government. You know, people who wonder about whether our elections are, you know, are honest and on the up and up, this is a great opportunity for you to see it, you know, firsthand. And, you know, anybody who does, you know, will come out of there saying, yeah, our, you know, our city clerk runs a very tight ship as far as elections are concerned, and it's all, you know, we can all depend on the results. So that brings me to, you know, the election, political signs. So I implore people who are running for office, you know, if you're running for public office, you ought to make the commitment to know what the laws are about political campaigns and political signage and obey those laws, lead by example. Because if you get elected and you're in our position and you're making those laws, you know, people have a right to expect you to abide by them. So, you know, don't put your signs on public property. Don't put your signs on rights of way. You can put them on private property with the permission of the owner of the property. Not on telephone poles, not on signs. So, you know, every year, we have this plethora of political signs on state property and city property and rights of way. And, you know, if you do that, you do it at your own risk because public works will take the signs off the public property, and the state will take the signs off of their property. And they're expensive, so don't take a chance of losing your signs, and please obey the law. And I just want to say the, I appreciate the mayor acknowledging the generosity of the Cadiz family to the back-to-school program. But I'm sure they would appreciate knowing that you can, that everyone can thank them by frequenting their businesses, Ace Hardware and Nashville Wallpaper. Thank you.
Alderman Lopez.
So I want to first thank everybody who was involved in organizing Employment Connect at the library this past Tuesday. It was during Election Day, so it was a very busy day. But, I mean, the rain was also rough on our turnout as well. But it was a very well-supported event. I appreciated all the businesses downtown that collected their dress clothes and their interview clothes, and I think all the people who got to use them did too. Soul Sisters donated food for the event to make sure everybody was well-fed. We had a number of people with very, very transformative experiences that felt like they were finally able to present themselves as the way they wanted to and seek the opportunities that they were looking for. And I really have to give my, give credit to the library for being such a solid support and being so helpful in organizing this. It was, I know you're all going to be shocked, it was raining. So I asked if it would be all right to leave the clothes that we'd collected, cleaned, and set up, out for a little bit longer so that I could come up with a game plan for getting them over to a thrift shop without getting them all soaked. And not only was the library happy to do that, but they're happy to have them there, and they're giving them out. And that's the kind of thing that just goes the extra mile for somebody who's having a really rough day to see that there's something a little extra that they can use, that people care about them a little bit more. So I really applaud the library for being such a welcoming facility and so well-organized and well-run. Thanks to Jen McCormick, the director, Holly Klump, Pam Baker, and all the staff who were so helpful. They were also integral to what I think was one of the best multicultural festivals I've seen in the city. Connecting it with the farmer's market was a great move. Bringing it back down to Ward 4, I think was an even better move because I think a lot of multicultural communities are based here, and the transportation and everything's walkable, you know, and we're not repaving roads. And in general, it was a very, very well-run event, and people were very happy to be there. It was great to see, and I think it was very well-organized. September 23rd, this, the week, the Saturday after next, I believe, is the Out of the Darkness Walk. It is recognizing people who experienced or have been impacted by suicide. So I would encourage anybody who has been touched by that or is working to support that in the intervention of that in the community to consider signing up for the Out of the Darkness Walk. I wanted to say, with regards to the public comment that we heard tonight, it is unfortunate that the public might feel that they're being maligned. But I would also point out that the public can see the comments that are being made. And I, there are a lot of very negative comments about others that are made as well. And I don't like it when I hear negative comments or very, very aggressive comments towards city staff in public comment. I don't think that's what it's meant for. I think there is some legitimacy in saying, okay, well, I want to make sure that if I'm being particularly mistreated or there's an unjust rule, that there's awareness. But I also think targeting public employees who are obligated to be here is unfair. And I think when you make public comment, your comments speak for themselves, and the public is absolutely able to see them in the context. I think Attorney Bolton does a great job representing us. And I don't know if I'm directly misquoting this, or as I recall it, having your job summarized, Attorney Bolton, as always ready for a fight and never willing to settle is not a bad characteristic in our city attorney. I think if there are other areas that we can work on to prevent that fight, that just makes your job easier, and you're probably cheering just as hard as anyone else for that. So thank you for your service, and thank you to the other city staff members in general.
We settled more cases than we tried.
For the record.
Just in case you were interested.
And then finally, I would want to just comment with regards to the park discussion that we definitely visited. I think that it was pointed out that we are all going to be here, and we're all Aldermen, and we could at any point put money in here. And I think that was the point. Because most of us have been on the board for the past four years and agreed to that first slightly Faustian bargain and have now agreed to the second one. So we wouldn't have had the conversation if we had been putting money back in or if we had been pushing leadership and the study of that area. Now, we've had a pandemic, and we've had a number of crises face the city. So we really did do those neighborhoods a disservice by not necessarily trying to organize a feasibility study or the interest in developing a plan for that. We should do that. We have time now in the fall to at least do organizational planning. I'm planning on being here next year. So I think anybody who is an Alderman in the vicinity of that, whether it's Ward 3 or whether it's the ward that the park was focused on, or it's Ward 4, which is about two blocks away, that has plenty of families that would benefit from a recreational facility in that area. I think we need to do that, and I think the at-large Aldermen who represent the city need to consider the needs of the individual parts of the city as well as what I see as a recurring theme, that the larger needs of the city override the individual local needs. We have local Aldermen, and we do our best to represent our wards. But I also think that my fellow at-large Aldermen could be involved in these plannings. And I think there's plenty of knowledge and plenty of know-how available to address this issue. There is a park over by the Senior Center that maybe we could be pushing money towards. And I think the Board of Public Works probably is another stakeholder. We should start having those conversations so that we don't have another conversation like this in two years. Thank you.
Alderman Moran.
Thank you, Madam President. One, I would like to also echo my colleagues regarding the multicultural festival. It was amazing, I brought my kids, I saw many, many of you. I do admit that Alderman Camo did disappear. I was trying to find him, and then I saw him, and then I didn't. So yes, it is true, it is very large in the downstairs of the library. I found Alderman Sullivan, you know, but then you disappeared. But it was a great event, my kids had fun. They always enjoy seeing Alderman Timmons and Alderman Tebow, and of course Alderman Lopez. Lopez. It was a, it was a, it was a great time and of course the farmer's market and the great food that was there. I want to send kudos to the Ward Nine election workers. It was my first time voting in Ward Nine the other day and I thought they did a great job. It was streamlined, it was quick. We were in and out, even though, you know, we changed our registration a couple of weeks ago to the, our new address, but we still haven't gotten the updated driver's license. They were still able to make sure we got our ability to vote and it was wonderful. And I saw many, many great involved Ward Nine civic leaders excluding present party because I know if I say this too much, a certain alderman might meet me in the parking lot later on. But I ran into Alder, not former Alderwoman, Gathwright, state rep. And I also ran into current state rep, the Honorable Marty Jack, who's actually sitting here in the audience. Not many people know this, but he served the ward for almost 12 years now and almost has a, as a state representative, almost has a, I believe he has a perfect voting record, has never missed a vote up there. And we had a great conversation at the polls. What a great representative. Now I have three great state reps to lean on. Not to say that Ward Seven didn't have three great state reps either. But it was great to have more conversation with Marty. We were on the executive committee at the county together, but we really talked, I think, the most the other day at the polls. Also to the, thank you to the first responders in DPW for the storms and the upcoming storms. You did a great job responding to all the needs of those in need. Let's see. Oh, the library workers' contract. Yes. Attorney Bolton is great. He is wonderful. He's a perfect, great attorney. I know you're negotiating the contract. I am fully in support of the workers down there. I know you have to express your best interest of the city, but I just want to express my, my positive vibes towards the workers, if that makes sense, without any aldermatic interference.
I'm fond of libraries.
Yes. So, so, yes, and I'm a little disappointed in my colleague from Ward One. There are other great events happening on Ward One. My company is having its grand opening, One or Less Therapeutic Services on seven, next week on Tuesday. You've all been invited and it's going to, we serve over 1,000 patients and many Ward One citizens as well. That is in conjunction with the Chamber of Commerce and is open technically to the public. You got to register through the Chamber of Commerce. Speaking of which, also to all the great Nashville small businesses that won Best of the 603, including me. So I like to pat myself on the back every now and then. But one last thing I just want to correct. I missed it. I guess we're getting sued again. I missed that part, are we? Is that happening? But I heard something coming in. Just to correct the record, that speaker was not called a child predator. There was, there is a lawsuit that was dismissed twice by the judge. Never happened. Not real. Completely dismissed. Twice. Just want to correct the facts of misinformation.
She hasn't mentioned that.
And it is a public record. Feel free to go look it up. Not that I want to dwell on it longer, but we just can't keep having the misinformation come, especially when a judge ruled twice that it didn't happen. Thank you.
Alderman Clay.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to send my condolences out to the family, friends and employees of Regina Lang, who is the owner of Snap It Vintage. She passed away at the end of August and she will be missed. I've read a lot of, I'd only met her a few times going into Snap, but she's very obviously loved by her employees and my heart goes out to her husband, Ed. I want to thank my colleague from Ward Five. I appreciate you bringing that up about the fund and so on because it does give us more conversation. So don't feel the need to apologize. It was good work and thank you for doing that. I don't want you to feel that just because we voted against it that it wasn't worth discussing. It was. So thank you so much for doing that. I also want to thank Attorney Bolton. Even recently as last week and this week, I have been driving him and the attorneys in his office crazy, asking him ethical questions about when to recuse yourself, when not to recuse yourself. And it was a very difficult one because I always thought you only recuse yourself if there was a personal interest or, but there are some nuances to that and he and his staff have been very helpful to me and I find that they are extraordinarily helpful. And he is the first person that I go to when I need advice and so on. And I'm grateful that he's here for us. So thank you so much for all that you do and for those...
I'm well compensated.
Well, for those in the public, just know that our attorneys don't just fight lawsuit battles and they don't just fight, write legislation for us. They do a lot more work for the city to keep us all safe. So thank you. And to my colleague in Ward Eight, we're starting to get a large group. My colleague in Ward Six also, also had that, I call it the throat-cutting event. And you're slowly joining the club with us, but I'm going to physical therapy because of my November and hopefully it'll help. But the Nashville Goes Back to School event, it was extraordinarily, I didn't actually get to it. I got stuck in traffic. I tried going around every which way and realized that I wasn't going to take a parking space from someone just so that I could show and get to look at everything that was happening. I didn't have any children, so I called my husband after 25 minutes of being in traffic and said, I'm heading home. But to that end, there, I'm going to discuss the Pearson Ave parking lot. A lot of people were towed from that as they were from the multicultural event. And everything, the towing and so on is legal and it needs to be known that it's legal. We as citizens have to take personal responsibility. The city has gone out and put a very large sign that said, warning, do not park there. Granted, there was some confusion. I stood in the rain during the multicultural event. I stopped over a dozen people from parking there. I can't do that all the time. I just happened to be there as multiple cars were being towed away. Sadly, they had children and as they came and saw that their cars are missing, the children were crying and so on. It's a shame. It was done legally. They were confused by our signage of warning, so we're going to make some change to fix that a little bit. But for everybody that's listening, please, it's the first parking lot after the city's metered parking. Do not park there and do not park beyond that point. You see the sign that says warning? That's where you stop. And I want to go back and again, thank CSX for coming to the table for this, the rail crossing. We're getting a lot more cooperation from them than we did from Pan Am and I think that that's, that is important to note. The rail has been the ugly, I don't know whether you want to call them stepchild or whatever. Yeah, step problem, yes, big problem. But I think CSX is trying to work with us and I appreciate everybody that worked on that. And to my colleague from Ward Four, relative to the parks, perfectly said. And thank you for saying that. We do need to look towards doing those things. And to Director Sullivan, thank you for changing, for working on the land use codes. I keep going to him and saying, I want to change this and he keeps giving me the pause of, we're working on it, we're working on it. So I look forward to seeing all those, all those changes and so on. And for the election last, yesterday, it was, it was a low turnout and I think in some cases, because people just thought it was a primary, they got very confused. I kept trying to explain to people it's more like a runoff, but the one thing I heard over and over again was, I saw the sign out there that said, vote here. A lot of people didn't know about it. I did send it in my newsletter and I tried to do this. So November 7th is the next one. It's the big one where most of us are running, so please get out and vote. I always like people to vote the same way I do, but I know that's not reality. So go, get out, vote for your, the person you want to. Don't just assume they're going to win because more likely they won't if you don't get out and vote. And I also want to say that on the 16th, the Humane Society is having their Wags to Whiskers event. You can go online and see about that. And I also want to say to the speaker who talked about lawsuits and so on, there is, while we, Supreme Court made a decision and so on, the Attorney General's office has come out against and is asking for a kind of rethinking of that decision because it could be harmful to municipalities in the future. And I think the New Hampshire Municipal Association has come up to with some very, very pertinent, I don't want to say criticism, but concerns about that. And I will stop there. Thank you.
Alderman Sullivan.
Special thanks to not only Ward Nine and the poll workers, but City Clerk Keely. Well done, well-run and I admire an operation that runs without a hitch, so thank you. I also want to thank Donna Graham for putting, I don't know if you organized it, but you were there when we went on the BAE tour on Monday? Was that Monday?
It was just Monday.
Yeah, Monday. That was, that was great. Learned a lot. BAE is an economic powerhouse in our city and was happy to see what they do inside the walls. So, thank you.
Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. I too want to jump on Clerk Keely's bandwagon. I was at Ward Nine and from what I heard later on with all the other wards, thank you to our unsung heroes that do come in pretty much volunteering their time. Long days and long hours, so they should be commended. And please, if anybody wants to get into that, we can definitely show you how because we need the help. It's part of being in a civic duty. The other thing I want to mention is just keep in mind, they're saying we're having a possibly hurricane, but it'll probably be a tropical storm by the time they get up here. So once you're done with this meeting, please turn to the Weather Channel. But anyways, the thing is, make your preparations, do the right things, keep the kids indoors, you know, let the professionals, keep in mind, fire and police, they are first responders, but also Public Works. They'll all be out and doing their thing, so give them the space to be able to do it and please don't add to the burden. So just sitting back and being wise, I think with all storms, whether it be a blizzard or anything else. I can't wait till we get our first snowstorm of the year and watching somebody doing 360s down Main Street. But anyways, it's a rite of passage. So thank you, Madam President.
I would like to say that I appreciate the work that you do, Attorney Bolton, that I think you do a good job for the city and thank you for that.
Thank you.
Tomorrow, I mean, not tomorrow. It feels like tomorrow already.
It's getting close.
Tuesday, the 19th, there is a special election in Ward Four for state representatives. So those in Ward Four, please go out and vote. I'd also like to thank the people from BAE Systems, Tom Bishop, Monica Gilbert and John Lee for offering a tour of their facilities. I thought it was a great, a great time and appreciate them offering that to us. Committee announcements. Alderman Lopez.
Human Affairs Committee is next week. We do have an agenda item, but we're also having a conversation on sober housing, how the city approaches it and then from some of the programs that provide it as well. So if anybody's interested in that, it's pretty significant in terms of some of the troubles we're having with homelessness and unsheltered people.
Any other committee announcements? Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. Motion to adjourn. The Board of Aldermen's meeting is September 13th, 2023.
Motion is to adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned at 10:45 p.m. Thank you, everyone.